Did Cory say anything about coming over this long? Okay, I'll text him. Just making sure.
Yeah.
Well, it is eight o'clock, so I will call the meeting to order. We can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public want to make a comment? All right, we'll move on. Need a motion to approve the agenda in minutes? Motion by Garman. Second? Second by Haas. Any discussion on the agenda or minutes from August 12th?
Yeah, I did have a question or clarification maybe here on the assignment to tax sale certificate on the parcel.
Okay.
It does say the ten dollar assignment fee and contingent on city filing everything on their end. And upon assignment to the city, abate all taxes, including drainage taxes.
Oh, excluding drainage taxes.
It should, it should be excluding that sound, I watched the video and sounded like that's what they said and recommended and that's what we've always done.
I don't think legally you can abate them.
I think it was only twenty bucks, so I don't think anybody's gonna go broke over that, but I thought we should clarify that.
Yep, good catch. Okay. We will correct that in minutes then. All right, anything else? Okay, if not, all in favor of approving the agenda and minutes with that change, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, discussion, decision, review and approve claims and the conservation claims. Need a motion?
I can make that motion.
Okay. Anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
Second by Whacter. Discussion on the claims.
Not just that I will have to stay?
Yep. Anything else? Further discussion on the claims, all in favor of approving, please say aye. Any aye? Any opposed? Sorry, one abstention. Four ayes, one abstention. Okay, acknowledge budget status report. Any questions on that? Have a chance to look at it. Well, we don't need a motion, so it's good to acknowledge those, that. Okay, we'll acknowledge the budget status report then. And reflect that in the minutes. Okay, Dan is not here yet, so Cory is not here yet. We will come back to those. Oh, Dan did, he sent an email.
He had surgery.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. So we will.
I didn't see that.
I'll wait, yep, no.
That's right, I forgot about that, yeah. We'll scratch.
It was down the ways, I missed it.
I did see that, yes, thank you.
We will scratch that for today then.
He did put his notes.
He did put his notes on there, so we can review them if you'd like.
So you want to talk to Cory, is he coming or you don't know?
Send him a text here and he hasn't got back to me yet.
Do we want to call him?
Yep, we can, can do that. You want to call over to his office?
Hey Cory, it's Josh over here in Fordham. We are up to monthly update with planning and zoning administrator, are you coming over? Okay. Yeah, okay, all right. Bye. We use that order.
Okay.
Probably do it with your licenses, I would think.
Yeah, yep. We have a motion to approve liquor license for Columbia Hall Association of Albona. Is that a motion? Okay, motion by Garman, second by Stecker. Any discussion? If not all in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, discussion, decision, approval of liquor license for S and B Farmstead LLC. Motion by Stecker.
I'll second.
Second by Whacter. Discussion, where is this at?
Yeah, just tell me what it is.
Anybody else?
I'll tell you, you're in this.
This way sitting on that.
S and B?
Forty two one hundred.
Oh, is that the S and B Distillery thing? Oh, okay.
So what, so are they doing something outside someday?
They sell, they sell there too. They have a tasting room and stuff.
Okay. Anything else? Discussion?
For what it's worth, I think the Columbia Hall thing is for multi-studios, I would say.
Oh, yep.
Is this something different though, because we, the S and B has what we be putting in the city?
Yeah, this is.
They have another location.
Yeah, this has their location, yeah.
But that's, that's where their business is, I guess, that's what I was referring to.
Sure. I think maybe the Farmstead threw me, didn't name, yeah.
Yeah, a little different.
Well, if no further discussion, all in favor of approving the license for S and B, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And there's Cory. Good morning.
Good morning.
Alrighty. You can go ahead with your update anytime.
Not sure what y'all want to hear about, but.
You're gonna hit the highlights, I guess?
There's one, that one building permit that's up by Armstrong. That substation by Lead Yard. Needs a. Sent them a variance because it's under five acres. And. The battery storage facility. Sent them a specially used permit for variance up there also. Pretty much about it.
Okay.
Want to make any comments on the, whatever, I'm not sure subdivision's the right word, but what, South Town? South of Albona? As far as, what's going on, what's happening?
There is, so on, there's a public hearing on August twenty fifth. For anybody that has any objections for that. And then there will be, need to be put on the supervisor's meeting for August twenty sixth to approve that from there.
Assuming the money is only.
Right, assuming the planning zoning commission approves that.
And this is to do what with Southdale?
What are they even asking for? What's going on?
It's, so there's a, they're putting that subdivision out there and then it has to be rezoned.
Used to be a trailer park.
They're making Southdale into a.
Subdivision.
Subdivision rather than a trailer park.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure I do what was.
Sorry to make sure you're aware of that.
What's that?
I thought everybody was aware of that.
I don't know if everybody was, but.
I mean, I have heard, I have heard a little bit about it outside of the courthouse, but no, I didn't know any.
Who's doing it?
Uh, the vice chair.
Oh, okay.
And the planning zoning commission's meeting to.
On the, yeah.
Discuss that.
It's the twenty fifth.
Okay, okay.
That's at five o'clock.
Here. So for next week.
Yep.
And I sent letters out to all the surrounding neighborhood property owners, if they have any issues or concerns with it, you know, to submit the written letter.
Sure.
And so far, I haven't received anything back.
Thanks. Any update on, or have you had any communication with the attorney for the solar ordinance, or are you Tammy?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Yeah, she sent, she sent back.
Yep.
That's true.
Yeah, it's in your pa, in your board packets.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And we're supposed to call her today.
That's why I didn't know she was gonna be on the phone today.
Yep, she is.
All right, very good. Anything else for Cory?
You know when that'll be?
Oh.
Not really, but we can bust it.
Yeah.
Yeah. It'll be, I don't know. We'll call you. I want to give you a time and then it's way down later.
All right. Thank you.
Yep, thanks Cory. All right, I want to, Nick come in now?
Does he have just caller on that? Not this time?
He would.
Oh, just, just yell, just yell and I'll hear you, yeah.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Boggy.
Yes, it is.
Very boggy this morning.
Challenging right now. Anyway. I have a couple here, they're from Lakota, and they are interested in taking assignment to a tax self certificate that the county's holding. It is Dick Smith and, and I didn't get it.
Joyce.
Joyce, I'm sorry. They live in the, it's the highlighted, it's the highlighted one, and yes, and they live right next to it. They're, they're interested in taking assignment to the tax self certificate. I'll let, I'll let them explain just a little bit of the, you know, reasoning, things like that, other than it's right next to their lot or their house, so. Do you want to just?
Don't we understand?
Sure, you can, yeah. You can, you can stand and.
Oh, yeah, whatever.
That's fine, yeah, yeah.
Yes, our lot next to us has been completely demolished and we've been taking care of it for the past year and a half. And our fair little city of Lakota, it's kind of nice to have a lot next to you, it looks nice. And if you look at the rest of the empty lots, which are quite a few, they don't look so nice. Most of them may move at one time, maybe this year. So, I mean, if you would like to have possession of it as well and continue to take care of it.
No?
Anyway, the. And we're gonna approach the board about seeing about doing what we've kind of done in the past. There's like two hundred, two hundred fifty-six dollars worth of taxes on it. And since they're gonna go through the trouble of taking deed to it and things like that. See about once deed is issued, abate taxes on the property. And then they, there is a couple city specials, and they visited with the city and they do have a letter from the city saying that they will take those off also, so.
Is there any drainage?
No, no drainage on this. Nope, nope. So I would make a recommendation to assign the tax sale certificate to them and once deed is issued, tax de-ization, abate all taxes, property taxes that are on.
I, yeah, I'd make that motion with the exception of drainage taxes if anything comes up.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Stecker and second by Whacter. Any discussion on the assignment of the tax sales? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, guys.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're done.
Thank you.
Uh, Nick?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Hey, Nick? We've got a, to approve a tax abatement for Conservation Board, or does that have anything to do with that?
I don't. Yeah, if you just do it, I will, and Tammy gives us the information, we can go ahead and.
Okay.
We'll go ahead.
We don't need you for that one.
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, just double checking before you.
Kendall, he knows what it's on.
Sounds good. Good morning, Kendall.
Good morning, how you doing today?
Yeah, good. We got a tax abatement for Conservation Board land?
Yeah, and if you got my letter in the maps, what happened last year when we abated that Rod Schmidt ground. The map I had, we asked for and received the abatement. I listed the parcel numbers and there's one little corner in the northwest part of the property of two point seventy-one acres that I thought was part of the other parcel, and then this last July, a couple weeks ago, Nick informed me that that piece was a separate piece and had not been tax abated. On the new map, it's shown right up here and has its parcel number of one five one zero three zero 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 nine. So that's what I'm asking to have that, two point seven one acres abated, because I thought it was in the original abatement we did a year ago.
Okay.
Yeah, glad.
Motion by Haas.
Yeah, fix the motion, yeah, I guess it does.
It does.
A second.
Okay, okay, we'll give it to Amber this time. I think she piped up a little first. Okay, motion second, any discussion? Okay, and if not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. That's it, yep, thanks Kendall. Okay, discussion, decision to approve dissolution agreement of Care Connections in North Iowa, twenty eighty. Any comments you need to make on that?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Yep, yep. And the final. Closure of things on our agreement.
Yeah.
Anybody want to make that motion?
I don't.
Okay, motion by Garman. Dissolve the agreement.
I'll second.
Motion by Whacter. Discussion on the dissolution agreement.
What's the difference between the two different forms that are written there?
The second one, I believe, is the resolution they did at Care Connections.
Yeah.
Yep, that'd be the one we approved there, yep, yep.
And what's the first one?
That's for us.
The first one.
First one is for us. Yeah, the second one is theirs.
The counties would approve would be the first one.
Technically, basically.
It's basically two layers, because it would have to pass the Care Connections Board as that entity, and then once that entity passes, it then goes to the member counties directly.
We did, yep.
Yeah, it's signed in there, so.
Yep.
Yeah, it is the layers.
I think next Tuesday, I think next Tuesday afternoon is our last Zoom meeting to approve claims that came in after July first. No, any further discussion on that? No, do we need a roll call or?
Yeah.
Yeah, do roll call vote, please.
Uh, Haas?
Yes.
Garman?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Now?
Yes. Motion carries. There you go, I'll do it.
Do you want to start signing some of this stuff? Just the agreement I just.
Hey Doug, it's Josh. We are up to the gravel pit lease. Great, thanks. Moving right through.
It might slow down.
We've been down to get stuck on one item for a couple hours.
Do you want to initial right here so that I changed it?
Oh, sign here.
Yeah, just initial is fine.
I think I asked this before, but what will happen, what this Care Connections used to do, will anything happen there, somebody else?
That's state.
State.
Maybe I should know that.
So this revolting, like giving Care Connections a different, and now we have a.
Yeah, the distribution wasn't really much of a choice, they're done.
Yeah.
Whether you want it or not.
But whatever you want in there for condition.
While we're killing time, well, what did they actually do?
Uh, they were the kind of mental health unbetween that received the funding from the state and dished out money to the counties and local service projects and whatever, yeah. Good morning, Doug.
Good morning.
And we are up to the gravel pit lease?
Uh, yes, I contacted all of our tenants. And I did include in the electronic folder, there's kind of a location map. But Shane Kogler, he indicated that he did not desire to renew his lease. So we need to send him a termination of that so that we can re-advertise and get a tenant, so.
Not yet, you're hung up, but wouldn't it be up to him to terminate?
I, I don't know, to be honest with you. We talked with our county attorney, county attorney prepared a termination. I just want to make sure that it's terminated before we start advertising power, so.
Okay, so we need a motion to terminate the lease then?
Correct.
Yep.
I'll make, I'll make the.
Motion by Whacter, terminate the lease.
Thank you.
A second.
Second by Garman. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Then Carter, if you could sign both of those. Yes, very good. And we'll get one signed by Shane and he can keep one of them. Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Any construction in the right of way?
There are no requests for construction, road right.
And discussion?
Okay, the resourcing projects, they are winding down and will be completed soon. The B fifty-five project, traffic marking, we believe was completed yesterday, last night. And they may have gotten to B sixty-three, if they did not, they should complete that today and complete the P thirty traffic markings, so all those roads would be open to traffic. Uh, the bridge construction north of Sexton, God, versus Smith are getting ready for the deck four and they are scheduling that for sometime next week. We'll have a pre-pore meeting with all parties involved and get that port hopefully early next week. Last week, we had Merriman Bridge Construction Repair Bridge that was burnt up. That location was the north line of section twelve of Garfield Township, and that was, that maintenance work was completed. Blacktop Service is doing Seal Code work right now. They've completed the first two projects, which are on P sixteen and on eight thirty-eight. They are working on P twenty and they should finish that today. And then work on P forty-four, probably get that finished tomorrow or early Thursday. We have been doing a lot of communicating with the Iowa Department of Transportation. Highway eighteen east of Albona, between Albona and Wesley. There has been a lot of construction, they are actually going to have to close that road due to some road work and they will start using P fifty-six, P sixty, McGregor, P forty for detours. The last week, last communication that we had, it was supposed to start next week. It's, can change from day to day, it seems like. But at P fifty-six, there is a culvert that needs to be replaced. So that's why that section of roadway, and then at Sexton, they are doing a lot of reconstruction to move that road north. So that's what that is. Recycling vans, I believe I sent an email. There, the entryway off to that lot where the recycling vans are located off of McGregor is going to be closed. With all the road construction on Thorington, really the only access into the, that area is through an alley. And that really, with that being the only access, it does not allow us to go in, pick up the box, the recycling containers, remove them, bring new in without, it, it just would be too. It just would not be safe, so we made the decision just to remove those until that is opened up again. Roadside spraying in Cassuth County has all been completed now. We are still working on getting some people for the engineers. Uh, we are still working on getting some people for the engineers office in the Algonah shop. Uh, working on the uh Cassoot County Secondary Road Annual Report, I hope to have that. If not Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, it would be Tuesday the second, bring it to the board to review. And then the last thing I just, I'm planning on going to ISAC. Uh, I think I'll probably just go Thursday, but I may be down there Thursday and Friday, just to see. Uh, I know I'm gonna be there Thursday, but Friday is kind of, I can probably watch it virtually if it's just a meeting. I'm working on the transfer station permit renewal, which uh I should have that submitted tomorrow. Comprehensive plan is still being worked on. And then uh for self-insurance, still have one certification to complete. Waiting on some reports, uh so that we can get that taken care of. This is kind of all of the work that I have. And the road department. We got another inch and a half wanted moisture. We're maintaining roads again. I think the roads are well maintained, uh we are hauling a lot of gravel to them as well, so. Able to keep, keep up on that.
No, I know, I know they're not your projects, but in both cases, the recycling for one, do you have any idea how long that will be?
They are expecting ten days.
And then, again, I know it's not your project, highway eighteen, you have any idea what the timeline?
The, my understanding, those culverts, they actually have twenty days to complete that. And the work at Sexton, forty days.
And then any resurfacing, wouldn't happen come next year? I know.
We, they're, the, we're being told that their prime contractor would like to get that resurfacing done this year. This calendar year. So.
Thanks.
They, they, they're going at it, so.
Okay, I'll ask one more.
Sure.
So if the detour starts at, what I mean, P fifty-six and?
P fifty-six, yes.
So, does that say there'll be no resurfacing between Algonah and there? Not necessarily, or?
Uh, this, this is just for that culvert replacement. I believe when they start resurfacing, they'll actually have traffic control pilot cars, flaggers and that kind of thing, so they won't have to uh close it down, so they have to drag around.
And they have had some of that, it changes every day, every day, you're not sure where they're gonna be, so you kinda have to prepare ahead of time.
Yeah, I drove over it yesterday for whatever Wesley did. Oh, the, the biodiesel road there, you know. Yeah, it just changes every day.
Yeah.
Of course, yesterday was wet, so there wasn't a lot of activity.
Thanks.
Sure.
Sounds good, thank you.
You bet, thank you.
Okay, Drainage. Good morning.
Good morning. So these are the, just pass them down, okay, here you go. The I-Project report. And then the only new repair request is for.
Let's put elected mistake. They have more fun.
There's more.
And then all of these are yours from last week, yeah, just sign, get back to me.
Yep. And Kyle, you got one?
Yep, uh, it's number sixty-four and Drainage District one thirty-three, section thirty-four Seneca. To replace a couple allotments for Rodney Jensen, which is already completed, so. Any questions?
I do, I brought it up last week after the meeting. So, do they, do they, did you, I heard you say something to him, but do these people ever call in? Or is it all between you and them, and then you call it in?
Um, it depends on the individual, sometimes they call directly into the Drainage clerk or daughter's office, sometimes they call supervisor, sometimes they call contractors and contractor calls and says, hey, this is what they asked or whatever, but um, it varies by the individual.
So, so you've talked about in the past, about the geo-referencing or?
Yep, our maps, so we have.
Do we, do we get reference points on all these repairs then, and do they get recorded?
There's nothing on there.
Oh.
That's not what I'm asking.
No, but I, I'm just.
That's separate, so, um, a lot of mine do, um, I can't say that for every repair in the county, but a lot of mine do.
So, so is that up to you, or is that up to the contractor?
There are certain contractors that put points on there, but it's usually just the younger guys that are.
They have to do it, or we do it?
Either way.
Either way.
We have access to the same system, so it's, it's kind of.
So is it something they can turn in that, that Luke could, can put in the system? No matter who it is, or?
Yeah.
Is that, I, I mean, I don't know, I'm.
So like.
Well, even Bolton Mank puts some points on there too.
Yeah, they do, so like if you pull up the map right now and go to section thirty-four in Seneca, you can see red dots there.
Zach did say he put the dots in.
Yeah, so, I mean, yeah, like this one is a prime example, you can click on them, see pictures, um.
So for a lot of them, there are pictures of what they did, and stuff.
Depends on the contractor.
Depends on the contractor, so.
Should, should it be that way, or should?
Well, it's, it makes it nice, cause then you can go and review it, but.
There's a lot of value to it.
But it's not required to put a point on there.
Should it be?
I think it should be.
Wouldn't be a bad thing.
But we've had issues with just not getting follow-through on that at times, so.
Well, if you don't get paid, I'll bet the follow-through would come along a whole lot more.
I would agree with you, but that just hasn't been the board directive prior to this, so.
Well, I, I have concerns about, I mean, I, I've, I've listened to you, I have concerns about uh you know, if everybody does it, you have, you have legitimate points and, and everything, and, and you don't do, and I also, I, I'd, I'd like to see something uh as far as the farmer, I, I don't wanna make the farmer drive forty-five miles to turn something in, and I don't wanna slow it down. But I'd like to see the landowner, I guess would be the proper term, somebody actually call it in to the, to the office too. They can, I don't care.
That way you know it's the desire of the landowner.
Yeah, I don't, I don't care if they, they try to speed it up by going to the supervisor directly, but I think there should be some communication to the office too.
I have no problem with that, but that's just not.
Yeah, I'm not trying to rule, I'm just making a suggestion.
I mean, there's, eh, I guess if you looked back in history, there's plenty that you would find where the landowner called in and it got filled out that way, so I guess to some degree it, it some has happened that way already, it's just, it is very.
I don't, it isn't my passion about it, it's just a suggestion. Suggestion, but the photo thing and the geo-referencing, if that's the proper terminology, I would think that would be a, unless it's gonna have people say, okay, I won't do it then, I'm not gonna.
The only substantial or maybe substantial piece to that is you'd have to have a license for it, which we, I believe in the beginning, we were going to have the contractors paying for that, and then um it was kinda too much of a headache to get that even tracked down from them, so I believe if a contractor wants a license, I believe we even cover that right now, but it's.
License to do what?
License to have an account on the app, and that's three hundred and fifty dollars a year off the top of my head.
But he could email it in to Luke, and he could do it?
Possibly, but you would have to have the GPS coordinates, which you could pull from a different way, but like if you text the picture, for example, a lot of times the background data gets stripped from the image when it gets sent, so you would have to have it sent in a way that all that data on the backside remained with the file, so. I mean, from a technical standpoint, it's a little more complicated than just texting or emailing it over. But I guess, I use the application all the time, and I think it's pretty easy to work, um.
Well, I understand, we don't wanna spend three hundred and fifty dollars every year.
But if we're paying for it, then it's.
If, I don't know how many different contractors we, we work with, but I'm not sure I wanna rack up seven thousand dollars of the charges to.
Well, that's the other problem too, is that you could have fifteen, twenty different contractors you work with in a year and.
That's where, that's where I came up with seven thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you had the ones that typically we work for us, you could look at our claim that we pay regularly, you're probably only gonna have five or seven, so.
Do you guys, do you guys have an opinion about any of this, the other?
Not that I don't.
Luke takes care of most of that, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I do um think that it's helpful to have, going back, to have landowners sign the drainage um repaired requests, um.
But there's no, there's no method, excuse me for interrupting you, but there, there's no method in place for them to do that remotely or anything, a docu-sign or anything, they have to come in and do that.
To physically sign.
From what I've learned too, it is usually best if they come in, because then they know exactly where they're at, they're able to tell me exactly, you know, on the maps that we can put on there, and then the fact that they have to sign it, um, I don't know, I guess it just looks a little better than having somebody sign for this person, or report for this person.
Yeah, especially when we get to the point where there's so many laterals involved in the districts that are reclassified, so then if you are taking the request, you pull out the reclassifying, okay, oh, this one isn't reclassified, so I don't have to write the lateral, but if it is, then you have to write the lateral. So it is helpful to have them pinpointed. The ones that I've signed for, they've sent me a physical map with it pinpointed, and so I've had that, but otherwise, I don't like to do that, because I don't want to.
Yeah, I think.
Do it incorrectly.
In my opinion, it's much better if the actual landowner can come in and say, this is where I'm having the problem, this is where it needs to be fixed, because then they can show me exactly on the map what they're talking about, and even if we have to, I mean, yesterday I had a gentleman and we had to blow up uh two maps, and he was able to show me exactly um where it was, I mean, in one drain just barely infringed on his, uh, his property. But it was much easier to see and much easier to get that information if that landowner is in here.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't disagree with any of that in principle, so I guess don't take this the wrong way, but we did have conversations about the, even the form of the repair request, probably somewhere three to five, maybe six years ago. And one of the questions pertained to whether this person was even an owner or anything in the district, and we included in that question and discussion, we had reached out to um Jim Hudson, our Drainage attorney, and he said fundamentally, anybody could fill out a repair request, because if a UPS driver driving down the road sees something out in the field and says, oh, there's a hole out there, they could call something in. Once the request is received, it's up to the trustees to verify that it's a legitimate request and actually process it, so. From a paperwork standpoint, we added on that, like, at the top, you say that you're a tenant owner or trustee, and you can circle one. We tried to do that to kinda clarify things a little bit, that wasn't on the form five or six years ago, and it's not that it was really an issue, but we added that to clarify. But from a fundamental perspective, you don't even have to be an actual member of the district to fill out a request. You just have to have it verified after that to make sure that it actually is.
And speaking to that, I know that part of the process, when I personally took requests in that office, part of the process was to ask them, are you the tenant, or are you the landowner? Because obviously, the trustees are obviously only us, but um, that was part of the process, to have that information on those requests.
Yeah, and I don't remember, it might have even changed what you were still out there.
I don't remember it changing, that doesn't mean anything.
Yeah, it was, it was, it wasn't substantial, it was just, we updated the form a little bit when we got a new set of papers.
And if they were the tenant, you know, we, we asked them, are, is the landowner aware? Due to the fact that it's the landowner that has to pay at the end, so, you know, that was all part of the process, but.
Well, and sometimes I have landowners call me and say, hey, can you go and fill this out for me? And I'll put their name and their number on there, but I'll sign it.
Yeah, I'm.
Just so that their name at least is on it, and their contact information if contractor has a question, or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, like this one for Rodney Jensen, I would have had calls and text messages from them, and after they were fixed, he sent me a text saying they were done, thanks for getting it taken care of, so I mean, like, there is some level of paper trail for this one in particular, outside of that, but just for thought, I guess.
Well, I, I, again, I don't wanna have, I don't wanna force somebody to drive. You made a comment Amber, maybe in the past, they did, no matter where it was, they did have to come in?
We did, we did.
I don't know how far in that, I have, and I don't, I don't wanna put a new burden on somebody, but I think it's gonna, and I, I appreciate, from the farmer's standpoint, appreciate speed in getting them fixed, there's no doubt, you know, when there's an opportunity to fix something. I, I, I think it's drifting away from, from any, from any accountability type of thing.
We did have a landowner that came in last week or the week before, and um said that another landowner had told him that he had done a request, and he didn't remember doing a request, well, did do a request, it happened to be a little bit different place, but it had his signature on it, so, you know, he knew, he made that request, so, you know, it, it does mean something to have that signature on there, yeah.
I know it's a little difficult, and it does, it does, I mean, I remember being in there, and, I mean, I, Norma was um very, when she was a Drainage clerk, she was her Drainage deputy, she was very, no, you need to come in and sign this, we wanna make sure that it is pinpointed correctly, and um, ultimately, you will have to sign, or the landowner can send their tenant, whatever. But that communication with the landowner and tenant had been noted on the repair request, I mean, that was, that was something that then, it was, no.
And I would have to, I mean, even though I'm new to the position, I would have to agree with you, because sometimes I'd get such minimal information, I don't get the actual name of the landowner sometimes, or even a contact information for the landowner, if somebody else is coming in, especially if they've got like a laundry list of some of them that they're doing, so. I, you know, kind of agree hard there, it's kind of like checks and balances, is if we have somebody that's coming in, then everybody who's going to be affected is aware that that is being replaced, repaired, it's, you know, this is how long the project's gonna last, but at least everybody that should be communicated with is given that information and has that information.
And also when there's questions, like, you know, assessment time, and somebody comes in and says, what, what is all this, who requested all these repairs, you know, you can get all that out, and um, they, oh, okay, you know, then they might not care so much if it was their neighbors, you know, or, or it, it, I don't know, in an attempt at better paper trails, like better.
Yes.
Bookkeeping, I don't know how to explain it, I think, I think it's a good idea, but.
I've always been told it's good to have a paper trail.
Well, we can, we can update our policy to reflect that, if that's the desire of the board, because that's, that's what we would operate on.
What's, is there, is there a policy, you know?
Not in regards to the repair request, not to my knowledge.
So, so there's a formal process, we'd have to go, we're gonna put it on the agenda and?
I don't think it would have to be, but I mean, I guess that's just my opinion, if that's what, I mean, that, because ultimately, phone calls are going to come to, I have personally, like if the landowner calls me, I said, you know what, you either need to go into the auditor's office, or at least call the auditor's office if you have an exact location. At least call the auditor's office if you have an exact location, um, I try not to be the person to do that. But it, it has worked for me, I know it doesn't always work, but um. I think it mainly, the communication, if it comes from us, get a, you know, you need to go into the auditor's office, it's just going to be. I don't know if it has to be formal.
Well, from a travel perspective, I mean, the people in the north end of the county are not gonna be real excited about driving down going on tips, they're not already coming here for.
But there's a lot that do.
But there, there are, there are quite a few that do, but.
And they used to do it, they might not have been happy about it, but, you know, at the. After everything's all said and done, it's the auditor's office who has all that paper trail and. And has that landowner s- signing it, to me, it, it's helpful. I think it's helpful.
Yes, I would agree.
What's the process? They're on the agenda, and if they have, if they have objections, like.
I don't know if the board, if being there isn't a policy, I guess the board be creating a policy as far as how.
Drainage district policies.
Yeah, but I'm saying for particular to, particular to this, though, I.
I guess my point would be, it seems like, and I have, by going by memory and what people remember, it seems like it used to be one way. We've drifted, there might be a happy medium, and we can come to that happy medium through discussion. We can do it right now, or we can put it on the agenda, but I guess I'd like to see some discussion about it or, or a policy developed.
I think.
Go ahead.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I was just gonna say, I think there can be a happy medium, I think the happy medium could be if, you know, that landowner is. Able to view the map to, to i- in discussion, like on a phone call, so that they are dealing with it. You know, with an exact location, um, that, to me, that would be a happy medium if they can provide that. Um, especially with the reclassifications, that's where it gets so important to have exact locations and. Because when those buildings go out, if a lateral should be built, then only the lateral should be built, so, um. I think that would be a happy medium, if we can somehow figure out the map part, that they can pinpoint an exact location. It'd be okay, but.
Sometimes an exact location isn't an exact location on the map, so it's good to go look at it.
No argument.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, because I know I was at one the other day, and I was at, on the, on the GPS, you know, tile line. For that, and I was probably a hundred feet off of where it actually was, and, yeah.
Again, that would, when they did the repair, if, if I'm changing subjects on you, but when they did the repair, they, they took the picture and it was. Geo reference next time, it, it wouldn't be a.
You would know.
You would know, so, and, and again, I'm not trying to, I, I appreciate that it's a long ways away for somebody. That's, uh, you know, it can be forty-five miles away, I'm sure, so, I appreciate that, and I'm not trying to shove anything down. Anybody's throat, I just, I think we should, I, I do think it's gotten a little lenient, I guess would be, would be uh my opinion.
Well, I'll admit, I've had repairs that, people live five, ten minutes from town. They say, hey, you're going to the courthouse this morning, could you fill this out for me, and I'll put their name and number on it, and, I mean, I've done that, and not very often, but there's been a couple. And uh, I, worth a discussion, yeah, yeah.
Whatever, whatever the process is.
So, um, I think it'd be good to, I mean, being that's not really specifically on the agenda to talk about today, it'd be, we'll continue that another time.
Let's be more specific, what other?
Well, yeah, what time, is that something you want to talk about, like next week, or?
I'm not, it's not a burning issue for me, but.
Well, will we have a lot next week, or no?
Oh, we can take a time and get to it.
We can.
Yeah, because, you know, we, all I was gonna say is, we have a new drainage clerk now, it'd be nice to have it. If, if we are gonna make some kind of change, do it sooner than later, because she can, she can.
Be the bad first.
Thanks, Aaron.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
We're here to carry you.
Next week, we have the public hearing on DD four, but that's all so far.
That's every, all so far, okay. That's fine.
Are we gonna have a specific policy that's written, or are we just gonna make a motion and say, hey, this is the way we'd like to see it happen?
I think so, I think a motion, I don't think, unless you guys disagree, I don't think we need an official policy.
I mean, I don't care.
I think it should be added in with our policy, we already have stuff that's spelled out, and that, I don't know why this would be any different.
Where is that policy?
Auditor's office about it.
Okay, well, I don't know, I wasn't aware that we had a writ, separate written policy.
We do.
Okay.
No, but there may very well be one. Yeah.
We'll find it.
We'll find it.
We'll find it.
Yeah, because if it is something, we should have it on our, in our drainage file, okay?
Okay, I agree. Kyle, are you gonna sign off on those, and I'll take them?
Oh, sorry, sorry, my, my bad. My bad, sorry.
Need a motion to approve.
I'll make motion for city planners to handle our requests.
By Whackto, is there a second to that?
Sure.
Okay, second by House, discussion. There are none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Looking Gary. Anything else for?
Nope.
Today, good, I think Mrs. Suer started cleaning out the tile in Widdmore today.
Oh, yay, that's good news.
Good news.
Jetted and cleaned and cambered.
Is it empty enough, that can actually?
No. They're gonna work with it. They're gonna, they're gonna pump it out, one manhole down the street and work at it a section at a time.
Yeah, wow.
Cause it just doesn't shut off.
No, I'm sure it does not.
We're all aware of that.
Yeah, I know, I know, yeah. That's what Bob said, he says, we could wait till it stops raining, but, or stops flowing, but I don't know if I'm gonna get there this year.
Yeah, right, and then who knows how next year will start, so.
Says, I just decided, you know what, we'll just, we'll just make it work. Okay, so we have solar ordinance first here, yeah, we keep going, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Tell them we'll be back in ten minutes or so.
Hey Cory, it's Josh over in the boardroom, uh, we've got about ten minutes here, and then we'll be up to the uh solar ordinance.
No, we're good.
All right, yep.
And we do have more.
Yeah, I know.
Well, there's the first, first.
I'll make sure I stood up slowly so my chair wouldn't go flying backwards, cause it usually does.
Thank you very much.
Oh, should be yours, you're welcome.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. See you, Molly, okay.
I've resisted the upgrade to eleven, I guess, and. But it sounds like maybe it was, you know, there were some problems originally, the way you're talking?
Well, anytime they put out a new operating system, there's a lot of bugs and kinks in the system that could be worked out.
You don't want to be first?
No, not, not usually, not usually, unless you wanna. Kill a bunch of computers and have to reload and redo a bunch of stuff. Usually you do one or two test computers to make sure it's all kosher before you start rolling it out more.
Drain jail, district, about two and a half. I have the three gates I've done between one five, five, one six, five.
Yeah, I saw, you know, I saw real friends and neighbors and stuff when you hear that, between two and two and a half.
Yeah, no, no sign up to either networks or.
I don't, I don't have any of that stuff either, I've seen some of that, but. I, up in there, it was fairly consistent.
Sounds like Estroville Jackson had it once.
Of green?
Yeah, like six to seven inches or whatever, between Sunday night and Monday morning.
Yeah, I heard, what was it? Um, I'm not trying to call a town, but I heard somewhere up in Minnesota, they had almost twelve inches, you know. Yeah, like they had roads that got washed out. So, I guess, two isn't quite as bad when you hear that, but.
Twelve inches, way, 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 eat too much water.
Yeah.
Just make you sick, anyway, if it's a ride up to that point, it would be.
I guess we got more claims here.
This one is.
Didn't sign it up yet?
We did not, apparently.
The rest is just for me.
Maria is ready for us to call her whenever we're ready.
Okay.
You got a phone number or stuff coming out?
Yeah, uh, just a second. Okay.
Still a little bit of fog hanging out there.
Okay, are you ready, Josh?
Yeah, I'll just try to count real quick.
Okay, five one five two four six zero three two two.
She got an extension or something to drive?
Nope, that's, that's the number she gave. Maybe your cell phone, I don't know.
Trying to lean forward, my chair decided to go backwards. Hi Maria, this is uh Josh up here in the suit here, uh speaker in the boardroom, we've got our full board and our uh planning and zoning. Administrator in here, um.
And the auditor.
And the auditor, yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, we'll let you uh, I guess, start off here, we have your, your draft, uh or the draft of the ordinance that. For solar, the solar ordinance, and appreciate you getting that to us and, and received the draft with a few of your comments. Didn't know if you wanted to start anywhere, um, and for what we needed to discuss.
Sure, well, um, the trench is prepared based on the board's agreement. Um, so, so, I think the unit of work was a, a coordinate, uh, project. With the incorporated area of the telly very similar and modeled after the extension, now get to it. In the incorporated area of the county, very similar, and modeled after the intention, now gets to it. First, that's the ordinance. So that's, that's the structure of the ordinance, um, and how it is intended to operate. Um, the, uh, many of the definitions or, um, provisions are derived from, uh, other ordinances around the states that, um, that identify as, uh, perhaps having administrative terms that would be feasible for, uh, to this county to also administer. Um, I made sure that there was, um, applicable language regarding decommissioning, uh, in this continuing. Uh, and then the big necessary agreements, similar to your C-WEX ordinance, are going to include the decommissioning plan, proof of insurance, um, and a bond will be required for decommissioning. So, high level, that is what you're looking at. Um, there was some questions from the board that I attempted to address. Um, one thing that would be highlighted in Article Two is the decommissioning definition. Um, just the words, like a decision there of what all, and really with guidance of your engineer or, um, other professionals, perhaps leaning in on what all we would like to do within the activity of decommissioning. And that's the decision place for you. And then, if we can start there, were there any questions, we can start with Article Two definition. Were there any questions on the definition or, uh, the definition of decommissioning in particular?
I think the main objective of the board in decommissioning was that we would not be liable or responsible for any part of the decommissioning process, and that would all fall back on the company. I think was the main objective of the board regarding that, but as far as when you talk about specific process, how, how do you move forward with determining a process or, or where? Is that included in, in the ordinance here, or how, how does that look, I guess?
I'm sorry, the process for, uh, a company that might want to develop in this county, that would be, uh, within Article Four for application requirements.
Oh, okay.
Currently, it could be, um, by application to the county building administrator. Um, it could also be the county engineer, um, I don't, or the auditor for that matter. It could be anyone that the board delegates to handle the application. Um, that, so, getting ahead then to Article Four. Since again, it's similar to the application process for your C-WEX development. Uh, I have created something that is common for solar projects, um, and maybe also C-WEX projects, but in particular solar projects. There's, uh, a need generally for the, uh, application to sell out, how grading or landscaping will be handled. Those are typically features of a solar, uh, project, and this application typically will include that detail. Or you would want, uh, the review of those plans to be by someone the board is qualified to review and provide some input on the parts of the application. I don't know who you would want to designate for that part of the review, but I'd encourage you to give that some thought.
I can't grab a cat call.
Oh, sure.
We were, we were just debating, or discussing here, Maria, and whether the county engineer should be up for the discussion as well, if that would be helpful.
Does your county engineer also serve as your drainage district engineer?
No.
No. We do not have a drainage district engineer.
Yeah.
We do not have.
Well, we don't have one in house.
No.
No, we use, um, independent, third-party consultants for that. Um, we have a couple different firms we use, but, um, those are appointed individually for each project.
That's like the, with, both your county and house county engineer, and maybe you start with the county engineer and if he or she feels like this would benefit, or the application would benefit from a review by the drainage, by drainage engineer specifically, to ensure that, um, if any, the project plans in a particular solar project are, um, compatible with the, uh, drainage infrastructure in place in the area, that could be part of the application process. We could include that formally in the ordinance to that, um, review, the board would like review done by specific professionals, including county engineer, drainage engineer as appropriate, um, county conservation board, if you'd like the conservation board or director should have a review. Um, if, if any, you could, and she makes the ones we'd like to hear from evaluating a particular application can be listed in the ordinance part of the application process.
Take a word.
Thank you Doug.
Let me catch the last part.
Basically said it could be reviewed by anyone that we feel is appropriate to, would want to review it. So, and there's a list of entities or people, but she just said that's up to our discretion, whoever we want to review stuff.
The application.
From, yeah.
Can you encourage it, because you're going to have a requirement that certain details of the project may be evaluated. The board would benefit from a particular individual who has some knowledge of that part of the application. We'll always have the board make the best decision possible and weigh the benefits and drawbacks to each particular project.
So, it might be Doug, from Doug's standpoint, just review it as a, as the county engineer as far as roads and stuff are concerned. And you can, and more than one person review it, right? You've got a planning, zoning to it, and then forward it to.
And right now, that is captured in subsection J of Article Four, that the county can require additional information. And applicants would encourage to have ongoing discussions with the voting administrators and county engineers. There is a correlation with the application. So that would be the voting administrator's role, the shepherd that is currently tasked with administering this application. Um, and that would, would shepherd the application through to the appropriate party, but we can certainly spell that out a little more upfrontly as well. In a word about the zoning administrator, this ordinance is not currently, uh, designed to be added to the zoning code. It can be and perhaps should be, um, if the board is wanting to administer like a zoning ordinance, it should go through the ordinary processing or some ordinance that was, if that is the intention. This was, I believe, should be that ordinance, or be a long ordinance. Um, and I believe the zoning, the zoning administrator also administer that ordinance.
Yes.
So whether the zoning administrator administers a wind ordinance?
Yeah, we received the application and reviewed it.
Okay, yeah, yep.
It was a standalone.
Anytime the, the county is regulating the siding of structures, uh, if that is the intention to regulate siding structures, it would need to be a zoning ordinance. Now, if this ordinance is a regulation, this activity and development or to a site plan, um, that's a different type of ordinance. It doesn't have to be a zoning ordinance, but you should understand the intention of the structure here. And I don't think there's a lot of siding, I really, uh, siding-specific regulation here. It's designed to be more of like a site plan review process. Is that, were that the board's intention?
No. I don't know.
I'm, I don't know if it's just, I, I'm only catching probably two-thirds of what, what she's saying. I don't know if it's
It's quiet.
Not hearing right, but. Are you on speaker phone on your phone?
I am.
Okay.
I can try to, using my hand set.
Can you turn our volume up on our phone?
Is that, is that?
It doesn't go any further?
That's, that's why.
That is a lot better, yes.
Okay, very good. Very good. I had, uh, it on speaker so I could keep my hands free and type in anything that you like, but we can just have a conversation.
Um, so can you repeat the last question you asked about the difference between the siding and, and, uh, plan?
Yeah, if the board's intention is to regulate the siding of structures in, in zoning districts, in the county. If the ordinance needs to be structured as a zoning ordinance, which would be administered by the zoning administrator and board of adjustments, rather than the board of supervisors. Um, if the intention is instead to regulate a business activity throughout the county without regard to where that business activity, with specific zoning districts, that business activity is taking place in, that this ordinance does not need to be a zoning ordinance.
So I think.
I think it, I think it would fall more into the second.
No. Cause we were more discussing about the siding of where the projects would take place more, more than the, you know, business operation of it in general. We're, I think we're more concerned with where the locations were, and that would fall more into the zoning. At least that's where, what I was getting from it, if anybody else says anything different. Cause you're thinking different.
That was my first thought too, Josh, I, that, you know, we were dealing with two setbacks and, and things like that.
What were you gonna say?
I guess the setbacks was definitely one of the things we talked about and discussed, distances and all that, but I thought it was more of a, um, outline of how we wanted that business-type operation to function in this county on a whole, which I think would fall more into the second piece of what she said.
Well, so, is our wind ordinance, is that, that, that's not part of our zoning ordinance?
That's a standalone.
That's a standalone. And that's, that's really what we're discussing is, would it be similar
Yeah.
to how we structured that and the purpose of that? Is that, am I understanding that right?
Right.
I would tend to agree, then, at least that was my intention. It certainly includes the siding and routing of the where, the location of things, but not necessarily pertaining to the zoning district, more pertaining to the entities itself. Or the type of type of projects that they are. Similar to the wind.
Well, and I think that's on the structure aspect of things, if we want it to be administered similar to how the wind ordinance is, then it would have to be in that second category.
Right.
And that's what we talked about previously, I guess.
So, in the, the second option, doing it as a standalone, it wouldn't have to fall under, you know, certain areas of the county. They can then put it in, um, just about anywhere in the county as long as it's, it's in, you know, um, accordance to what the, the ordinance is saying, you know, for setbacks and stuff like that, does it, so we don't.
Maria, would this, um, I guess, I don't know if the best term, like overlay or supersede or affect anything as far as city jurisdictions? Or would they be duplicative, or how would that work crossing jurisdictions and incorporated areas versus unincorporated?
Yeah, terrific question. Uh, the county ordinance would only apply to the portions of the projects that are within unincorporated county territory. And any, if there's any portion of a project located within city, that would be the city applicable ordinances would affect those portions of the project. So, really, we'd need to work collaboratively with the city to, uh, in, in, in any review of cross-jurisdictional project.
Is, is that regardless of either route this takes as far as standalone ordinance or part of the zoning code? Or is that response specific to one of those routes?
I think that's in either case.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, but I just thought I'd confirm.
Hi Maria, this is Tammy. Um, just wanna make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. So, basically, the main difference between the two is gonna be who administers or approves, is that correct? So if it's under one, it would be the planning and zoning. If it's number two, it'd be the board of supervisors. Am I understanding that correctly?
It would be, uh, board of adjustments, correct, for, for the, for the, so the administrator, um, and the board of adjustments for zoning ordinance. Um, and then that, in that way, the ordinance would affect the, um, specific placement of structures in specific zoning districts of the county.
Okay.
In the non-zoning context, board of supervisors review, with, uh, a, board of supervisors could always request the planning and zoning commission, uh, review and provide recommendations. Uh, I'm part of the board of supervisors' role in, in, in itself as well, but I don't know, I currently, I don't know if that was something that came into the, in the review.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, and I think that's, I think that was one of the factors that we did discuss a little bit of who is gonna review that, and I guess from a standpoint of the board of supervisors being elected and the difference of planning and zoning being more of a volunteer position. I think we wanted to not place that burden on those individuals, so.
Yeah.
I guess.
And in that way, it would be structured the same as the wind.
Yeah, so that would be the second option that she had talked about. A more, um, business development plan guideline type deal.
Right.
And that's the way you currently have it written, is that correct?
Correct. It can, it can be, we can talk whether we, whether there are already zoning code ordinances, um, that also are affected in any way by and that maybe can also be looked at, um, to, to accommodate this, this ordinance as well, but that would be a separate discussion to have. So, you can have that discussion separately if we need to look at zoning ordinances or taking into review any zoning ordinances. But I don't, this one here is structured as a ordinance that applies throughout the county regardless of zoning district.
Um, Maria, if we, I guess, pause that aspect, we, our county engineer is, is here now, and we had, you had mentioned possibly needing to designate our county engineer or, or other individual on certain aspects of the ordinance to review things, just to make the best use of his time. Is there anything we need to discuss with him?
Uh, the, I would ask if there's anything to have engineering review, a grading, a grading plan, or if there is, I think there was a question in. Or is there, I think there was a question in the draft I received from the board, do we even need a grading plan or a zoning plan? As part of the application, I would defer to the charge of.
Did you hear that, Doug?
Yeah, Maria, this is Doug Miller, did, you were talking about the grading or the landscaping of, of a piece of property that the solar panels would be placed on or would be installed, is that, is that what you're asking, whether the county engineer would review that?
Right. As part of the application for a project, so there would probably just be one parcel of land that you'd be looking at. The project would probably be affecting many parcels, and so I think it would make sense for an engineer to review, at least a grading plan. We see landscaping plans also typically as development plans that are included in applications. So I, I, there was a question whether a landscaping plan was needed, and if it was, who would review that? Or how that, is it necessary, I guess?
I don't, I don't think it would be the secondary road engineer that would be reviewing that. If the board desires to have a review, I think that somebody else would be doing that.
I would think you'd wanna appoint an engineer that either does that specifically or, or something to correlate with drainage engineers. They would have your slopes and all that type of stuff and whatever vegetated growth that would probably have more of an impact on water flow like that.
Right, right. Well, Maria, I don't know if it's different in other counties, especially larger counties and with greater population. But our county engineer deals, or is the administrator the secondary road department, not necessarily involved in engineering like you're talking about, I guess.
Could that, could that just be, I guess, do we need to specify it in the ordinance? Or could it be a engineer or, I guess, someone appointed by the board at the time of each project for that review?
Yeah, that could be.
Who pays the cost?
Who would pay the bill for that, or can that be part of the cost of the developer?
Correct, so a couple of different options would be, one, including the cost, estimated cost of that professional as, if the application fee. I don't know how you would estimate that, you would probably want to have a conversation with an outside engineer to determine what was, what do they think would reasonably be charged, that may be hard to estimate. The other option I'd need is that the developer themselves is required to provide a plan that is, that has been reviewed, approved, and stamped and certified by a landscape engineer, architect, or other qualified civil engineer, so that you know, when they've, they've had someone look at it, did they pay that cost already?
Could that be a, whatever, certified landscape engineer of the county's choice? Or is that something that would be up to the developer, like, or is it something where we can hire them and then they just reimburse the county for actual costs as incurred?
I need that language like that.
Anyone else have any thoughts there?
It's gonna come down to what you're happy with at the end, if, if they hire a firm, are you gonna be happy and satisfied with their, you're not, you know, you're, oh, I'm not sure this is right, we gotta have somebody else, then, I mean, what, what's gonna make you happy? I don't have a lot of passion for this project myself, I, I don't, I'm not sure what our goal is of the whole thing, so.
Well, this is how I handle like, um, hockey funds and things like that, that they produce some master matrix and, and, I mean, they're producing it for us and we approve it, isn't that typical?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's felt out by the state a little bit more, um.
Yes, we have someone in house, do you still go out and look at the, when there's, I think it's the environmental health data, sanitary?
Yeah.
For hockey, I guess we probably haven't had any since we started, I think since I started.
Yeah, right now. Huh, we had, it's been a slow.
But that, that would be the correct position, yeah.
And our, somebody for the county goes out and reviews their matrix.
Yeah.
They provide it.
I guess it would seem to me that, carefully have, again, have, let, let, if you want it, have them hire someone and represent it. They would, you would gotta think that somebody that's competent would identify any, I mean, get, I envision them, I, I haven't envisioned them regrading the, of sixty acre property to make it, you know, that's not what I envisioned, but is that possible? I suppose it is, and that could change things, but you, you, I mean, I, I don't know. If you're the neighbor, you wouldn't want water that once went east to suddenly becoming west, I guess.
Yeah, I think, I think that would probably be the biggest concern that would come to my mind right away is rerouting of the natural, prior natural flow of water. And I don't know, I don't know if that's typical in any of these projects, and to some degree, I would kinda doubt it, but.
I would too.
Um, I just wouldn't think it would be cost effective for what they would do, I think they'd probably try to get the most economic parcels they can find to begin with, and that would probably involve as little construction as possible, but I.
Also, the lingo you've heard is, it's easily revertable back to what it used to be, you know, there's no concrete, so. But if it's something you're worried about.
I don't know, I, I wouldn't have any opposition to having them provide something by a certified professional or something in that nature, but like when we, I was just thinking of having the county hire it and then reimburse, cause on like the WEX ordinance, we have drainage engineers that oversee that, and we appoint them, but then they pay the bill. The county, there is an engineering firm sends the county a bill, we forward the bill on to the company, company pays the county, and once the county's received the funds, then we pay the engineer, so that's part of the agreement, is the engineer only gets paid after we receive the funds from the developer. So I was thinking structuring is something along that line, so we're not really on the hook for anything, but we'd be the pass through agent.
May, may I just, that is part of the, that's not part of the WEX ordinance, that's part of the drainage district procedures, so you're.
Yeah, I mean.
You're gonna have the very same, as far as drainage, you're gonna have the very same drainage district procedures, whether it is a windmill project, whether it's a solar project, whether it's an electricity transmission project, whether it's a natural gas.
Yeah.
Whatever is crossing a drainage district is gonna be according to drainage district policies, which you as trustees and the drainage district here trustees of would follow.
Yeah, and that's correct, it was drainage district policies rather than the WEX ordinance, but that principle is what I was referring to, I guess.
And may I also say that anybody licensed in the state of Iowa to practice landscape architecture, civil engineering, who would take on the project would be designing it under the same standards. So if a developer was required to put together a plan, they would follow the same laws as anyone the board would choose. So in my mind, for my own, why wouldn't you just allow a developer, just say it's required to have whatever landscaping plan certified by whoever and accept it?
Maria, is that pretty common across the other ordinances you're working on, is to have the developer provide the, the certified architecture or landscaping? And then, where, who, who has final approval on that? To, does that usually go back to the counties to do a final sign off on that after it's been checked out?
Yeah, I would say it's, it's common, and not every ordinance is the same, so those super processes I outlined to review, the two or three options I think we've talked about are the ones I see. And I, I, I think it would make sense to have, if you're going to have a certified engineer prepare the plan to have it certified, and that is part of the application material that the board would receive, the board would be relying on that certified qualified engineer architect, plan and approving the application. If there was any question about the plan or concerns, the board is only free to have a cert, to have its own separately hired architect or engineer do another review to evaluate for me, but I don't know, I, I don't know if I'm hearing that that's something that the, the, which I'm correctly talking about, who should provide, who should review the plan or stamp the plan, and I have to say developers provide that type of certified plan.
There's the stats.
I guess I'm not strong will either way, but.
As long as they have to follow the same guidelines that we would require.
I mean, they're gonna be following what's outlined in the ordinance, and they're gonna be following the, what is required of them in the state of Iowa, so.
Yes, I'd say that's fine, but.
Drew, maybe I, I wouldn't, I.
I'd, I guess I'd just, I'd maybe lean towards making them do it and pay for it, and we're gonna approve it in the end anyway.
I think they should pay for it either way, I guess, I don't really care if they are just required to present it or if we direct someone and passes through. I think you have a little bit more oversight, maybe if it's a decision of the board, but I really don't care either way. But I, I think they should pay for the cost of whatever it takes to get an end product either way, so.
I have some language too, does the board want a grading plan or landscaping plan? Is this a question for you all as you're wearing your drainage trustee hat? A secondary review of the drainage review. I don't know what you wanna do as part of the grading plan or landscaping plan, currently I have a grading plan as part of the application, and then I had a landscaping plan included. I didn't know if that's something that the board wanted or not. If there is a landscaping plan, then I would also add that language, same language approved to certified violation, qualified design control.
Yeah, I, I would think that'd be good for both.
Sorry, I don't know if there was anything else for engineering or not, Doug, did you have a chance to look at the updated draft? Have any questions, comments, concerns?
There still is a requirement for a, a road agreement, would that be correct?
Yes. So the ancillary agreements included are the road use, county road use and repair agreement, the public drainage system protection agreement approved by the trustees in each affected drainage district, an emergency response plan, decommissioning plan, and proof of insurance.
Does the decommissioning plan incorporate any bond or any financial assurance?
Yes. Maybe we can just have an article that says the decommissioning.
H six and seven.
The decommissioning plan includes cash, irrevocable letter, credit, work performance bond, guarantee, performance of decommissioning plan, writing in favor of the county in an amount no less than the total estimated net removal restoration cost. As determined by a state party report, I believe that tracks with the county's zoning ordinance process, does that sound any familiar?
Yeah, that sounds familiar. Um, do we need any teeth in the ordinance as far as if, like, if that was not maintained, that the permit could be revoked or anything? Or would that be under penalties where it's any material violation, shouldn't the grounds for revoluble?
I would say that would be under penalty.
Okay.
If there's an additional concern related specifically to the decommissioning plan, let me know, if you qualify article eight as well.
Not necessarily, I think, I think nine probably covers it, I just wanted to double check.
And we can add that, so section three said, that the, each year the permit holder had to provide proof that the security is still in effect, the decommissioning plan.
Yeah.
So we can add that failure to do so will amount to a material violation, we can add that effect.
Probably wouldn't hurt.
Please, we haven't talked specifically about the proposed setbacks and development and citing requirements. I wanted to make sure that, these were setbacks that the board provided to me, and I just want to make sure that there is some specific finding of public welfare needed for those specific setbacks that are proposed from the citing of the structure of the facility. Want to have some discussion about that today, or if, if we can make the citing more general than it currently is? And just have citing be within the development plan review, on a case by case basis. But you all had expressed that you spent significant time discussing that particular portion of ordinance, and I was in part of the discussion, so I just wanted to raise it.
When you, when you say appropriate for each of those setback distances, are you talking about having, you know, case studies or, or specific reports that say the distance shall be X number, is that what you're talking about? Or is it just what, you're generally asking what our justification is?
It should be based on, on some rationale, but I don't know if a case study or report is required for each of these, but that's certainly one way that the board can rely on information in a given ordinance. Is there, have you heard any concerns about the specifics of the act that proposed here?
No, I haven't, but.
Well, you had some of your own.
Well, I had some of my own, but not specific to the ordinance, so, I'm sure most people don't know what's even in there yet.
I was gonna say, it hasn't.
Yeah, I don't know who would be, unless you're following this super close, the general public probably doesn't know what's in there.
I'm not sure where you think we're gonna come up with justification for a certain amount of setback. I'm talking to Maria here. I mean, where, where do you think that's gonna come from?
Um, well, I mean, it depends on the specific concern you're trying to address, right? So we start with, what's our goal? Why are we, why are you using that in the first place? And so from there, you can draw the line between the concern and the information you need to address the concern. So it may not be the same resource for each proposed setback. So drainage tiles. Maybe your engineer, drainage engineer has thought about that or maybe there's maybe 100 feet from center of tile. That's the standard construction, uh, that's the standard that we apply to any construction building permit. Maybe that's the case. I don't know. I don't know that information. So it's just occupied residence. Why, why is that a requirement from occupied residence necessarily? I don't know that. If that's, if that's something that, where that came from, so if that's a concern related to glare or, I'm, I'm not sure what concern is trying to be addressed there, but we can walk through the specific concerns and try to meet, meet those goals.
Well, I think the 100 feet and 300 feet, that was what was previously outlined by the board in the, in the WACs ordinance. And so we had drawn it from there and just maintained consistency there. The public right of way, of course, went recommendation by our county engineer. And property lines was just the standard distance that we had. I think that's, that may be even in our, our zoning policy ordinance anyway. The 500 feet was probably the, the biggest discussion item for the board. And I think that's where we'll, maybe you're looking for most justification. How we came to that number, well, to be honest, I was asking for more and certain, and, and I don't, I don't know who was all, maybe someone else was asking for more too, but just from the little discussion, I remember some of us wanted more, some of us wanted less, and that was our compromise number. And where we met a happy medium of, of, we felt this was reasonable enough to send for you for a draft, but open to change. And being that we were providing the option of waivers for neighboring landowners did not see that as a unjustified number at the time. So that's kinda how we came to that, I guess.
Well, if I have another suggestion, I'll, I'll include it in my next round of edits. Probably have, I think I have added it to my comments to the document, but I had a report related to the renewable energy development project that may have included additional information the board could consider. Actually, maybe USDA and Energy Association, I, that's one resource, it's another governmental resource, but some, uh, some, some people find helpful there, so I can see if there's anything related to occupied residence there, but yeah, I, I would know what the concern is on occupied residence is enough to address that. Is it, is it folks that just, um, don't wanna, is it aesthetic, you think, to property owners or what's the main concern?
I'd say aesthetic, noise, and glare. Those, I mean, are probably the three main concerns. And I mean, there's other concerns that are out there, but I would say those are the three primary ones for people living out in the country. And, and I guess in general impacting quality of life. So that's what I was getting at for when we're using justification. I mean, for anything, finding specific studies or whatever. Is it not enough to say, I believe as an elected representative of the people, and this is the feedback I'm getting, that, that this impacts quality of life and therefore I feel this is justified. Is that not? I guess, and maybe this is a dumb question, but is that not enough to, to justify that, just from my standpoint?
And I would say it's not enough. If wanted, it's not arbitrary. So if, if from our perspective, we wanna know in court, what's dealing with the challenge to this ordinance? Well, how would they evaluate the basis of particular requirements? Are they arbitrary or is there some basis for, for that requirement that connects the requirement to the goal? So that's, that's, that's the standard. If, if in your experience, private feed is sufficient to address those particular concerns of aesthetics, noise, glare, then it's more likely a court would uphold that particular requirement in, in a challenge, in a, in a challenge. I, I don't know what type of contrary information that a challenger would have. So maybe there is any, maybe 500 is from, from a, from a occupational, is, is the standard. I don't know. So that, I, it's hard to answer that without knowing, without a specific set of facts and knowing what someone who would be in opposition of that particular requirement would say, but that's why you have your public hearing. So you have, at the time of public hearing or can you receive additional information from interest holders prior to considering the ordinance formally? That's, that's the time to receive and, and thoughtfully consider all of the information before you.
Mm-hmm. And so just, just thinking hypothetical scenario here. Say we are challenged in court over that specific distance. And because the developer does not think it's reasonable for what they're planning to do or desiring to do. And we come back and say, well, that's why we have the waivers in there. You can have a, a smaller setback, but you gotta work with the neighboring property owners. And there, then therein lies the cooperation to make sure that everyone there has quality of life per se or, or whatever the concerns would be, would be addressed at that time.
Sure, I think, I think that certainly helps.
I mean, anybody can complain, but if, yeah, I guess it prevents people from just running over the neighbors too. Or developers from running over the neighbor properties, I should say.
Is, is there a private feed from occupied residence requirement in other ordinances or zoning, in like within your zoning code? Uh, speaking of the C WAC ordinance, but.
No. I believe of, is a wind 600 feet or 110% of tip height, or is that on approach or something else?
It's, it's different 'cause it's based off of, I mean, a, a 500 foot structure rather than a 15 or 20 foot structure, but.
Yeah.
Is there anything similar or comparable to solar arrays that they aren't full arrays, they're kind of like full arrays and the county decided there's a particular amount of space that needs to be between homes and those types of structures? I don't know.
I don't think so.
This type of business? Like, uh, sometimes you, you know, your junkyard or, uh, other type of. Something of that nature where there's, there's a potential risk involved in, uh, having residences a little too close, which is not compatible. It's just all about compatibility and, and when you're weighing that question in your mind, what's compatible with occupied residence? And how far does that compatibility go? I could take a look and see if there's other, you know, differences to obtain even after stiller distance for occupied residence. Thank you for the info on public right of way. If that makes sense, drainage of the tile, like you gave me a free for that one as well. I would just encourage you that if, if there's a drainage here or if there's some other, there's some underpinning for specific this specific, uh, distance from center of tile for construction of this type of structure. Just start taking, make sure you're taking that into trouble hearing. But property lines, I think you clarified as well. Public conservation area was included. I believe that was in the WACs ordinance, but there was a question on whether you really needed it. Here, are you, is the board stating to you, provide a copy of this ordinance to your conservation board or director to take a look at? As well, do you have any thoughts about conservation area impact, if any?
Well, you, you have a note in there that you, says conservation area setback removed. What, am I missing something? Why didn't you remove that?
I took it out. Um, I got a comment back on the draft that just had question marks next to it. And so I don't know if the board specifically asked you to include public conservation area in or not, and so the question marks were just meant to say, let's have some discussion on it. I can add that back in and maybe if you wanted to consult with your conservation director on that particular setback, that we can leave that as an open question. Can you get that piece back?
My question would be, why is a conservation area any different from any other area in the South? But I mean, it's hard for me to justify that a county park or, or whatever is, has more priority than a residence. And it's, it's hard for me to justify that a residence has that much, you know, once you get that far away, that, that there's anything within this that's gonna affect them, so. I, yeah, I, I don't mind if it's removed, I guess. I don't, I don't think it needs special consideration, but I could be wrong about that. I don't, I don't think of every possible scenario.
The only thing I question with that is hunting in conservation areas, they have public hunting and, uh, someone's out shooting, shoots through a solar panel.
How's a solar panel any different than anything else?
Right, on your living room window, yeah.
Oh, those aren't accidents, Doug.
And that's what you bring up, Josh, is the developer's concern and not conservation's concern.
I had that same thought. I mean, if, if a solar panel gets hit by stray around or something that's leaving the property, it's not our liability for that or risk. And that would be either the individual that loves it or.
Are we, are we sure? Are we sure?
Shouldn't be.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't know.
If we say public hunting allowed, does that, does that mean that we're endorsing? I, I don't know. I, I don't wanna tear it apart or get that. That's a question for her. If, if there's a conservation area that says public hunting allowed, are we responsible for what leaves that area and might hit a, anything else? I don't think so, but.
I think someone would struggle to win a court case on that, but I guess, um,
It was just a thought that I had, so.
I would, I want to, wait, why don't we do this? We can keep, we can either keep the public conservation area in or we can remove it. We can find, but I would encourage the board to ask, ask for input from other agencies, including conservation. In case, you know, maybe they don't have a concern, maybe they do, or maybe there's another way to address any concerns they may have. And I would also encourage it to share with your E 911 or any of your, your, or any to respond. So any, any other agencies or individuals using cookies have help or give feedback on, basically on speaking of advice up to the table and, and have that discussion with them or send them a copy of the ordinance. That way we're, you're getting even more information to what we have now. And you can, you can decide from there to see if all the things need to be added.
I think that sounds like a good idea.
Yep.
I do have a 10 o'clock meeting, I'm so sorry.
Nope, you're good.
I terminated here, but if there was anything else that we wanted to discuss, would I, I can make myself available for another meeting. We can, um, we can discuss that another time. How, how would you like to proceed from here? I, I did have one other question on the scope of the ordinance that I wanted to talk through a little bit.
Yeah, because I wanted to ask a question about identifying regulated system based on output capacity. Uh, you had a comment on that re, recommended involved, so I, I wanted to address that for sure.
Right. Right. I, I think that's an important conversation to have. So if you wanted to re, if you wanted to set up another work session, that maybe it's shorter than this one, maybe not. But just let me know that I will, we, we, that way I can make sure to block out the appropriate amount of time to be able to finish a working discussion.
Well, let's, let's, let's keep it moving. Let's get it out to the, the 911 conservation and have it back in a week or two weeks and tackle it then.
Yeah.
Yep.
Maria, do you have room on your schedule for next Tuesday?
Maria, did you hear that question?
I did not. What were you hoping?
Uh, do you have room on your schedule for next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, the 20th. I sure do. I am open until 12 right now. That usually isn't the case too, for too long though, so if I just put you down for a specific time, can you tell me how long? I'll make sure to protect that timeline.
Yeah, we might be better at two weeks. Do you have an opening in two weeks?
September 2nd.
On the 2nd? Looks like I would be available in the morning until 10.
Could we start at like 8:30 or 9?
Let me check and see what you have on your calendar.
Tammy's, Tammy's gonna double check our schedule very quick.
Okay. And I will get you.
We have a 9 o'clock open bid letting for the IDO's project.
Some of the limited comments we've discussed here on the decision point, so that you have a fresh copy to share with other agencies.
Okay, we have a bid letting at 9 o'clock on that, um, on the 2nd, so I don't think it'll take very long, but probably 10 or 15 minutes, so.
She's got a 10 o'clock after that.
She's got a 10 o'clock.
You have a 10 o'clock after that? Could we start at like right after 8? 8:15 or something? Okay, that worked for everybody else. Let's, let's plan on that then and we'll let you get to your other call. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
Okay. Thanks, Doug. 8:15 minute. On the 2nd. So on the 2nd, two weeks.
Will you send it to your conservation and?
I can, yeah.
I would say EMS and EMA as well, 911 and whatever.
Yeah. I got E, I got E 911 meeting tonight, so I could bring up them too, see if they've got any, put in any concerns.
So do you want me to tell them to concentrate on that area?
You have EMS in there too?
Uh.
EMS tonight.
Or EMS.
EMS. So Article 5.
Send them the whole five over.
Well, I will, but is that, I mean, they're gonna wanna know what we're questioning. They, they don't need to review the whole thing, so.
Say some hours for ever hold your peace.
Anything that would apply to them is what I would say.
Not that long, I mean. She sure picked it apart, I mean, but that's, that's what they wanted her to do.
Yeah.
For sure.
Do you have any thoughts specifically that you've sent back and things like that?
Nah, we're off the top of my head, no.
Okay. I don't, I didn't understand the, the, her comment about the, the, what processes and what the owner to follow for decommissioning. And then you get down in that lower section, that's pretty thorough. I, I, I mean, I don't understand what she's asking.
I think what she was asking was who's gonna oversee that portion of it and, you know, the checks and balances on that and, and who's in charge of it.
Yeah, I, I was with you, Howard. I was confused the first two, but I liked Josh. Yeah, I think it's just more who's in. Yeah, I think it's just more who's administering or administering that.
Okay. Thanks. And pay for it, I heard you.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that, that's, but there's something in there about a bond or something, it has to be.
Cash or your local line of credit.
Right, and so, I don't think that's what it's for. But anyway.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Courtney.
Thanks, Courtney.
Just, I need to sign.
So both of them have one copies, really, so that ones.
Oh, oh, sure, yep, yep. Okay.
Before we get to the.
Oh, sure, yep.
Workshop.
Yep, you can take a quick break. That's fine.
Everything fall in the line with the lap forty and forty-two, everybody gets satisfied?
I think they're still working on coming up with finalized plans and passing here, so.
Could they continue to, Doug, anymore?
So, I mean, it's raining so much, that's, that's a significant factor right now. I know there's quite a bit of water standing there. I think they could probably work for a wave, but once a couple hundred feet, you'll start getting into the low ground again. And that's where it's on, so.
So. I, 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 I don't know what kind of hurry anybody's in, but, but can they, can they open up the tile and, and dig a?
The old, the old lateral is flowing to its full capacity again.
You can't open up the new one to disstray upon.
You might get a lot of dirt going with it.
Yeah, you know, I, I, yeah, that was my question.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think anybody would see that as beneficial.
Okay, so, and I, I don't care, I have no dog in the hunt.
Oh, yep.
You know, they, yeah.
I mean.
Does everybody, everybody think whatever drowned out, by this point would have drowned out no matter what?
If the tile had been sold, probably not, but, I mean, on a normal year, yeah.
Yeah, so.
A year or two ago with the same water, yeah, you would have the same stuff, drowned it out for most of it. The temporary restriction was maybe outside of the norm a little bit, but, I mean, I've got.
What, what was the temporary restriction?
When they downsized it to tie into the new line, so. I mean, I can't, I can't say that I can quantify that real, real specifically, but, um.
Yeah, I, that argument was, was a six inch going straight down and it hauls much to twelve inches on the grade, but.
Yeah. But, I mean, I got spots in my field, I think you were even mentioning it, uh, when we looked at the met by Yavla about whether we were gonna go around the wetlands or not. And I got spots in my field, they, they were green, everything was filled in, but now they've had standing water, so long they're dying.
Right.
And it's just been weeks upon weeks.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, I mean, that type of stuff, I don't know that you're gonna change a whole lot, because, but if the tile had been sold a month ago or two months ago, maybe it would have beaten that.
But it wasn't, uh, whatever, anything ever come, it wouldn't have worked, or it wouldn't have worked, excuse me.
Bancroft, um, I haven't heard anything more from Logan on that, so I don't know. But I know he was gonna get them some prices for jetting and potentially replacing through there, so. I don't know if there's anything really further on that yet.
Chilly in here this morning. Turn the heat on.
I can't keep up, I don't think. The builders can't handle it.
Have a fun talk.
I'll be right back, just a minute. Excuse me.
Water looks fantastic, I'm sure.
Wow, yeah.
Sustenance inside?
Good for them, I like them. Back to the slow pouring down.
Sunday's supposed to be high as seventy, oh, forty-eight or something like that.
I see sixty, sixty percent chance of rain on Friday, so, but it's three times to an inch.
I said next week, Friday's.
Yesterday would have started raining and there was six counties backed up. They were saying twenty percent chance of less than a tenth, so I wouldn't, I don't have a lot of faith anymore.
I remember the one time, I don't remember which of these storms it was. I specifically checked my phone, not very long before it was going to hit us. And it said about half an inch, so by the time the next morning rolled around, it was two and a half inches later.
Yeah.
So.
I've come to the conclusion that even they don't know what's going on.
That's.
I don't want to get, I guess, but.
Yeah.
I don't wanna do that.
They're pretty good with wind and temperature usually.
Temperatures, yes.
The current temperature, yeah.
The current. No, it makes it difficult when you're, when you're riding a motorcycle or, and you're looking at the forecast in the morning and it's no percent chance of, of rain. You get to work and then it starts sprinkling, you're like, well, I guess I'm gonna get wet riding home at lunch. So.
Okay.
Okay.
Were you, what the?
I think so.
Were you gonna say something?
No.
Okay.
Um, so I put two different spreadsheets in your packet for today. I also printed them out so you can make notes on them or whatever you want to do. Um, you're gonna have to give me guidance a little bit on how you want this meeting, this hearing to be run next Tuesday. And I can tell you what, what my thoughts were on, on my part of it. And then maybe we can add to it and go from there. So, my thought is to start off the hearing by reading the petition. So that landowners that are here know why we're here, 'cause we're getting a lot of calls on, on what is this hearing about? Some people think that they're getting assessed. There isn't an assessment on DD four open ditch this year. So, I think the first thing we need to do is read the petition so that they know why they're here. So, does anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Okay.
That's perfect.
Okay, um, and then I think we need to go right into the spreadsheets.
Which one first?
Well, I think I think the more, one that's a little bit more simple looking first.
Am I gonna help you out? Have a timeline?
This, yeah, yeah, yeah. The one that just has the orange and the yellow, how about that?
Only two colors.
Yeah, so this spreadsheet I did differently than the first spreadsheet, 'cause the first spreadsheet has so much information on it. I wanted to break it down. Kind of, my purpose of it was to look year by year, how much in warrants was issued and how much was assessed? Because our, our biggest issue is, I think, and please tell me if I'm wrong, not enough was assessed over the years to to pay the bills or to, um, for the warrants that were issued. So, that's why the seven hundred thousand and the three hundred thousand dollars had to be assessed in twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five. So, um, what I did, starting back in twenty eleven, twenty twelve, but I don't know if we need to go back that far, but there was already information in the computer back that far, so I.
I, I think it's good that you did.
I started there. The first column is warrants issued, second column's warrants outstanding, third warrants redeemed, interest paid, and then the assessed value. So, we can go through each year, um, which I will probably do. But I wanted to total up the amounts of warrants issued and the assessed value before we did the three hundred thousand and seven hundred thousand dollar assessments. So people could see the difference in the amount of warrants that were issued and the amount that was assessed, which was six hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents. And that shows, um, how short we were. Now, this worksheet doesn't tell you why only that was assessed, but that's because I don't know why. Um, only that much was assessed, so, so this is basically just giving you the numbers and the facts.
And can I say something in between there? And maybe you and I need to talk about it a little bit after the meeting, but I somewhat did the same thing.
Okay.
And did total, total dollars received in the treasurer's office versus paid out. And I only had a difference of eighty-four thousand.
Tot, total?
Yeah, so, let me see here. Difference of paid versus received, so what was paid out, what was paid out by the treasurer versus the dollars received in the treasurer's office for that drain?
Yep.
I had a difference of eighty-four thousand.
Yep, and that could be, this is my differences between how much was assessed.
Okay.
How, how much we assessed to.
Right.
To landowners.
But that's where I have that question, because we assessed less, but yet it was.
But some of that could have been.
Yeah.
From, from previous. Drain, so you're saying, in what year was that?
Well, I, I just added up, I started with two thousand, eleven, twelve, like you did. And I got listings from the treasurer's office as to how much money they received in their office. Okay, for, however it is, I, and it's not divided out by waivers, nothing. So it's amount that they received and then, um, the difference between the amount paid out and received was only like eighty-four thousand dollars difference.
Okay, mine's quite a bit different than that, so we'll have to look at our numbers.
Just to see maybe where you pulled yours from and where pulled mine from, and maybe we'll figure out that difference.
Yeah. Because, um, then you can see at the bottom, total warrants issued, three point eight, only assessed two point six, which is a difference of one point one five four.
Hello?
So this did not print that, but I did have, let me open it in here, 'cause I thought I had recorded on there if the FEMA funds come in and the assessments that are due. And remember, these worksheets are based on numbers up to the end of fiscal year twenty-five. This does not include numbers that have come in in July and August. And we have paid bills in July and August and there has been more interest. So these worksheets are based on the end of fiscal year twenty, twenty-five.
Yep, 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 understand that. Yeah, I see what you got here.
Do you see that? Okay, yeah, it is on there. For some reason it didn't print out on the worksheet, but if you look in your packets, it does say, um, warrants, sorry, warrants that are still out without interest, the waivers due, and then if we get the FEMA funds, the balance would be uh, well, it would be two hundred and fifty, two thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-eight cents. That would be overpaid, if that makes sense, so. I don't know if that's how, how that works, what you do with that money at that point. Um, then if you look at the second worksheet, the colorful one, we talked about this one before. Um, and this kind of just breaks down FEMA dollars a little bit more. And it compares warrants issued, warrants outstanding, and what was assessed, um, what was denied by FEMA. It does have in there FEMA dollars of one point nine eight two, I'm sorry, fifteen, project fifteen eighty-three FEMA, um, one that, one million nine hundred and eighty, two thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. But Kyle did point out that there's about a hundred and sixty thousand-ish dollars of that that's not drained for. That, that project did have, uh, some other drains in there, so there is about a hundred and sixty thousand that's not drained.
Twelve sixty-five, that project, twelve sixty-five?
Fifteen eighty-three.
Well, no, but the other.
Twelve sixty-five got merged.
They got merged together. Twelve sixty-five.
The ones that were merged were other ones in DD four that got brought into that or they got combined. But there was already other projects in the county in that same project with the original ones on the lower end of DD four, so. There was, and that was part of the paperwork. Nightmare, for lack of better terms, with FEMA. It wasn't, it wasn't split out by our drainage districts for their projects, so that's why it's.
Okay.
It's not necessarily a bad thing, it's just something we have to be aware of, that that full book, because that was, that was a figure from what we submitted for the closeout. And I, I think I have the exact figure here of what um would have been for drain four, which comes out to a balance of one sixty-eight ninety-seven. So, um.
But the the twelve sixty-five, was that the portion, even though they were merged together, was that the portion that was other townships? Because I wanted to say, I thought there was something for gray water now.
I don't think so.
And I shouldn't, I should have said townships.
Yeah, um.
In.
I don't have all that memory.
In phase one, uh there was, last seventy-one was also included in that project, so we had DD four open ditch and last seventy-one in that first phase.
Okay. Okay.
If that's what you're thinking.
Okay, so so that, are you saying that's a mistake?
No. No, that, it was just included, it was two projects together.
It's, it's not a mistake, that's the correct dollar figures from the closeout that have turned into FEMA. But it's not just something that DD four would be paying the bill for, so those, those bills for those other projects.
Or getting, or getting the credit for if the money comes in.
Correct, yeah, so the money that's been received has been based on reimbursement requests for invoices that have been sent to FEMA
Correct.
from where the tap was, or the other ones have not had reimbursement requests. So you're right, they they won't pay the bill, but they also won't get the credit at the end of the day, or they shouldn't, obviously. Just to clarify that, because that obviously does affect the numbers there.
So I guess the the bottom numbers kind of tell the landowners that if all of our FEMA funds and if all of our waivers come in, um we will have a positive balance in that account. Um, so no future assessments will need to be done, and then how that positive balance is handled will be up to you guys to decide. So that's my reasoning of putting that in there to show them where we stand at this point. Um.
I believe we would have two options as forward for that. I believe you could either just leave it as a positive cash balance for the drain. Or there could be, in essence, some sort of refund issued back out. I, I don't remember who I've talked to about that over the times it might have been other supervisors. It might have been an engineer, attorney, I feel like that has happened, or I know someone that I talked to said that that has happened, like there's been for X Y Z reason, there was money issued back to landowners based on their classification schedule. Um, but I think that's a rare occurrence, um so, but that, to my knowledge, that would be our options at the time.
Nothing to worry about until it happens.
Right.
And it may not ever happen, if the FEMA money doesn't come in.
And that's what we're waiting on.
Yeah, so that's, that's a decision that can and obviously would be made at the time after funds.
And they're in their ninety-day wait period um to respond to the state's request.
Our, our appeal.
Our appeal, but they're in a, FEMA's got ninety days to respond from whenever that was, July.
Yeah, and it's not that invoices have been denied, it's that.
June, July.
June, July.
Yeah, there's a determination memo issued, which is their language, um, but.
So we'll know more on the funding later this fall, basically is.
Sure. Yep.
Where that's at.
Yeah, we we have rece, I told you this before, but we did receive money from the state.
Mm-hmm.
Um, hundred and twenty, some thousand.
Twenty some thousand. Yep, and we should, which I was gonna bring this up for discussion today, so obviously it can fit here.
So.
Um, but for the FEMA project, the category Z is for management costs. And that is five percent of your total obligated um project balance. So for us, that comes out to about sixty-eight thousand, as it's written currently. Um, if we are successful with the appeal, that has room to go up, obviously with a higher um obligated balance, if that changes. But we can do a request for reimbursement for that, the state has paperwork prepared for that. But basically was gonna talk about that with the board and see if there was any thoughts or concerns as far as getting the money in the account. I don't think there's any reason that that would be a bad thing, but I was gonna bring that up today, because.
Is that, you're talking for like Leon or what do you mean administrative?
It would actually, it would actually cover, um, I believe, almost all the Calvin Burns invoices and some of the Bolton Mink invoices um for actual design of the project. There's some that falls into administrative and there's some that falls into like construction, like your inspection in the field and stuff like that would be construction cost. But the actual project engineer and some of those more administrative roles, those actually count towards admin costs for FEMA.
So that was.
And those are reimbursed at a hundred percent rate.
And that wa, that wasn't included in the original submission to FEMA or the cost?
That's not part of, that's not part of the closeout, because it's a separate category.
Okay.
So it's just five percent of your blanket total project is what's eligible for management cost. So, yeah, I mean, that's significant to some degree, but um. Yeah. I guess I wanted, I just was intending to stay more quiet in the beginning and see where the conversation went. But um I do think it's valuable worth pointing out here with the way the petition was form- formulated. Um, with twenty nineteen as a break, and I understand Tammy's logic of doing a total before the most recent assessments. But um I looked at some comparisons of basically the same thing for what was issued versus what was assessed from the beginning up to twenty nineteen and then from twenty nineteen and down. Um, and I think there's some value in those comparisons as well, because prior to warrants issued through fiscal year nineteen, with Tammy's spreadsheet here is one million, eight hundred and fifteen thousand, six fifty-eight, seventy-six cents. And then assessments through twenty nineteen was one million, six fifty-five, seven sixty-four, ninety-eight cents. So with that.
You did that to the end of nineteen, like fiscal year nineteen, or you did it to one, okay.
Yes, yep, um, so on the spreadsheet, it's line seventeen. Um, so that would, if you follow that over, that would be the row that says twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen.
Okay, so you included that, that's the last year you included.
Yep, um, and that difference of what was issued versus assessed comes out to a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight ninety-three and seventy-eight cents, which would not account for interest either there. Um, and then I did basically the same comparison of twen- fiscal year twenty to fiscal year twenty-five for the rest of the time period on the sheet. And that, that total issued was two million, twenty-two thousand, eight oh five and twenty-five cents. And then I have assessed plus FEMA, which comes out to, and that's FEMA payments so far. Comes out to one million, nine eighty-nine and seven twenty-eight and fifty-nine cents. So that shows a difference of thirty-three thousand, um seventy-six dollars and sixty-six cents, which would also not include interest again. Um, but then, as we talked, the remaining FEMA funds to come as well. So I, I just added those as a couple um comparisons along the timeline, but.
Did you say, I I may have misheard you, but when you were talking, you did the first one through line seventeen. And then, and then you said you added up the second group, it took off after that line seventeen?
Correct, so it'd be.
I thought I heard something different when you were listing the years.
Oh, no, well, it'd be, the first one is through fiscal year nineteen, twenty nineteen.
Yep.
So that would include nineteen, and then the next one is from fiscal year twenty to twenty-five, so they'd be side by side.
Which would. Like we do, they're starting at Ju- July first of nineteen.
Yep. Yep. So, yeah, the, I guess, basically, line number eighteen on the spreadsheet, between fiscal year nineteen and fiscal year twenty would be the break in those formulas.
Yep.
I don't know that that's a fair comparison, just because. The reason that I did my break is because to show why we needed to do those assessments. Um. There's several years in your break where there was nothing assessed, and then two big ones made up for it, so I don't know that that's a fair.
There is, but that splits the projects. Um, the other project would have been done prior to January of twenty nineteen. Um, in the beginning of twenty nineteen is when we had these issues and had the presidential disaster declaration. And started the process of fixing those issues. So expenses incurred for engineering, for all those sort of things, would have started at that point. But when you look at a typical schedule of doing the project and then you figure out your total cost of it, and then you assess at the end. Um, some of those costs that would have been incurred above your break in the timeline would have actually been costs for the more recent project rather than the previous project. So I think while I, I do see your difference in doing it before those assessments. There was bills incurred that were for the newer projects, so breaking it there does not make sense to me, from a project standpoint.
But we're not, we're not looking at it from project standpoint. The landowners want to know why they're being assessed, that three hundred thousand and that seven hundred thousand dollars, and why you were short. That's what they wanna know. They don't care about what projects were in between or what happened. They wanna know as a whole, why the account was that short.
Yeah, I think showing them more is is better, because it kind of tracks it. And even going back, like, I had went back so far and Tammy went back a whole year more than me, so then I went back that year too, so that her and I could you know, compare. I did my own stuff, she did her own stuff, and we sat down and we came up with things that were the same. Like, oh, good, okay, that that tracks, that's a good thing. I think it's impo, I think it's okay to show them a bigger picture, because it actually does kind of show, okay. In spots where maybe we should have assessed, we didn't assess. More is better at this point.
But. I don't disagree with that, and I didn't remove Tammy's calculations there on line twenty-four at all. I just did two other comparisons as well and labeled them. And those, those years where we did not do assessments in twenty-two and in twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three was while that newer project was actively in the works. So, I mean, whether you call that the normal for how that process would transition, or whatever justification you put on it. Um, that's typically how assessments were done, is, I mean, we did the three hundred thousand dollar assessment while the construction was still going on, because we knew that there would be at least fifteen percent that would be the requirement of the landowners. Um, so I guess.
Well. What is the dollar amount of the interest that you had calculated previously on your spreadsheet? I wanted to compare that to what was actually paid out in interest. I wanna know if there's a difference there.
So at the time that we had those hearings, that was calculated based on um the assessments that were done and when they, how that went through the timeline. After that, um, the spreadsheet was updated to reflect status date of when the actual um specific invoices were actually called in by the treasurer's office. So I don't have that dollar figure of how that was calculated, because the spreadsheet was changed. So, I mean, I've tried to go back and adjust formulas, but I don't think that a spreadsheet that I came up with is going to be received any better now than it was at the time. So I appreciate the spreadsheet that Tammy had put together, because it's, it's not mine, it's not anybody else's. It's prepared by the auditor's office. And I guess I have some written comments that I will either read today or next week. And I guess that can be food for thought, depending on how the rest of the conversation goes. But I think we should just work off the documents that we have in front of us.
Right, but you see where that, that question, the only reason I'm asking is because I went off of, because you said anyone can go to the treasurer's office or go to the auditor's office, get same information. I did. I wanna know if what I got was the same as you. And it, and I should be able to do that. Because I got it directly from him, calculating what the dollar amount was, what interest was paid, and what was paid out.
So the, the reality of what that does, when those substantially three payments, but maybe even four.
So I.
Um, when those payments from FEMA came in of a hundred and nine and a hundred and sixty-six and then six hundred and seventy-four. Especially in the beginning, those paid warrants that were issued on the previous projects. So just because of the first in, first out nature. And I don't know if anybody's completed any research on that, if there's any room to change that at all. But fundamentally, that is what happened, whether any of us agree with it or not, or whether there's any room to change it or not, that's what happened.
Right.
So those bills got paid from outside, from a reason outside of a board assessment. Um, therefore, the actual interest cost for those on a report that you would get from the treasurer's office is less than it otherwise would have been if those had stayed on the account until an assessment was created for it, from the board.
And how, how do you know that, if you said yours didn't calculate that dollar amount? You said yours didn't necessarily calculate that dollar amount, so how would you know it's less?
Because the board didn't do an assessment for any of those dollars in. Those, those payments were received for the FEMA project that was.
That's not really answering my question, because I I tracked all that, I tracked all the money, and when you get the reports from Nick, it also shows when that money was received. Um, so he's going off of what he's receiving and what he's paying off, virtually, it, it didn't pay for that project. No, but it doesn't matter. It paid for warrants and and those warrants were paid and interest was issued. So I did exactly what you said, and I went to Nick and I got those dollar amounts. I want to know, was it less or was it more than what you had came up with? I I guess I don't, I'm, I don't know why that's such a terrible question to ask.
I hope the landowners are gonna ask that on Tuesday, so we, we need to address how we're gonna answer that.
Yeah, so. If we, I don't want next Tuesday to be a, any kind of a big fat argument, like I want this to be answers. And I mean, I I guess I don't understand why my question to you is never answered. I I don't understand that. You told me, go do your own research. I did, so now let's compare notes. So we give them the answer, so we, maybe it's the same. How do you know? Maybe it's the exact same thing. Maybe the treasurer's more. You said the treasurer was gonna be less. Maybe it's more. Maybe the treasurer's more. You said the treasurer was gonna be less. Maybe it's more.
No, I, I said it, it would have been, the treasurer's reports that you'd get show what actually happened. We agree on that, right?
Absolutely.
So, if none of these dollars from FEMA had ever came in, let's, hypothetical scenario. There would have been nine hundred and sixty thousand that would have never came in for principal balance. So, every warrant that was paid with those dollars would have accrued more interest because they wouldn't have been paid at the times that they got paid, if that didn't happen. Because there wasn't an assessment to cover them from a different source.
So you're saying interest would have kept adding up if the FEMA wasn't paid back? Cause they'd still be on the books. So you still have more interest. Okay, get that.
It's just a simple concept. If that, those dollars hadn't came in, the warrants that were paid with them would have still accrued interest.
And they still, well, and they, they still are. I mean, anything on the books are accruing interest. Anything on the books.
Yes, but the ones that those paid off to the tune of almost a million dollars are not accruing interest because they were paid off.
Right. Right. They were the older ones. So, yeah.
But then, if you go to the treasurer's office and get a report of what's still outstanding, it's going to show the newer ones. And then when the comments come that we're still paying in for stuff that FEMA didn't pay for. I don't really feel like that's fair because the FEMA money paid for older warrants instead of the newer warrants. And I don't, like I said, in principle, I don't know that that was right. That's just the system that's always been there. And I, at the time.
That's, I get that, that's explainable. Yeah, that's explainable. The total outstanding warrants on the books is four hundred and four thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. That's directly from Nick's, four hundred and four dollars. So, I mean, if, if you go. And again, Tammy, you and I will compare. We basically did the same thing. I just did it in three separate spreadsheets versus one, kind of. I mean, the amount there was since, I mean, I went back, same as Tammy did, so granted, I did more time than she did. The amount of warrants that were issued was three million, four hundred and sixteen dollars, seven hundred and eighty, no, four hundred and sixteen, seven eighty-seven thirteen. Interest was two hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine fifty-two, twenty-four. So the total amount of warrants that have been paid is three million, seven hundred and twelve dollars, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. So, that's what I came up with from the treasurer.
What did you have for warrants that were issued?
Um, well, it might be different than, it is different. And I differ just a little bit.
And I think mine has eleven twelve in it. Does yours have eleven twelve in it?
Which that would be thirteen thousand.
I start with, I'm sorry, my treasurer's is seven, one of twelve. So I'm doing twelve thirteen.
Yeah, so you were off a year, so that might be why.
So we're off just a little bit, but I, and I added it to the one spreadsheet, not to the other two. Because quite frankly, my other two parts weren't done yet. So, um, that's where I only get a difference of about eighty-four thousand dollars when you exclude that of what, you know, has been called in and paid. Versus money we have received or on the books.
What, what was your warrants issued again? I'm trying to compare to Tammy's. I know we, we're off a year, but.
Yeah, we're off. My warrant's issued. Now, you say I'm warrant issued or redeemed?
Issued.
Issued. My warrant issued was the same as Tammy's, three million, eight thirty-eight, four sixty-four, oh one. Mine was the same, right here.
Okay.
It's the exact same.
And then, did you have the assessed figures or did you have the tax?
The assessed value, the assessed figures were exactly the same as Tammy's.
Okay.
The FEMA dollars, the same as Tammy's.
So where in there are you getting the difference of eighty versus one sixty?
Okay, so then, so then what I took was, okay, the assessed, what was assessed? No, excuse me. Warrants paid, paid out versus the dollar amounts received in the treasurer's office. Which was three million, seven fifty-three, seven sixty-six, thirty-four. It's a difference of eighty-four thousand dollars.
Two different.
Yeah, that, that, is that the one with interest? That's the amount with interest because mine, like, the warrants redeemed, like, that's not including interest.
So I did a separate one for the treasurer's office for the warrants called in, the amount of the interest and the total paid. So seven, three, seven, one, two, seven, three, seven, let's see if that's the same. No, that's where we had a difference. That's where I had a difference of that year, yes.
Yeah, yeah, it's the interest. So it's the difference in the interest.
Okay, so your total was three point seven, almost three point eight million? Is that right? Okay, so if, yeah, if you sum those two together, it's three, seven, seven, two, one, nine, one, sixty-seven?
Yeah, and that's on the bottom of this spreadsheet. Bills paid with interest.
Yeah, redeemed warrants with interest, yeah. I didn't, yeah, I thought your formula was there, but I didn't see it right away, so I made another one, yeah.
And I think because hers is higher, she has the extra year and mine's a little less. Cause I don't have the extra year on, on mine for the treasurer's side of it. Cause mine's three, seven, one, two. So I'm sure it's probably that extra year. And we can fix that.
We can fix it.
Yeah. I mean, I liked the fact that I did my own and she was working on something and then we compared and we were coming out to the same numbers. So that was definitely good. Um, we were using numbers from the auditor's office and the treasurer's office and we were coming out the same. That's a good thing.
Independently, yes.
Yeah, independently. We weren't working together, we just compared.
And then together we compared, yeah.
Yeah.
So, do you want me to present these spreadsheets? Do you wanna present it as I have it? Do you wanna add what Kyle talked about? What do you want?
I agree. I think this one is a better, for just general public to look at and follow. It's, it's a lot easier to follow.
Yeah.
If you're just coming into the discussion, especially for the first time.
And, and we'll go over the second one too, you know, a little bit, but, um.
I'm just saying, I was agreeing with your time, your process, yeah.
I will make copies, so they have copies to look at too. But, um, I mean, is, does that answer questions? Does that kind of paint a picture of what has happened over the last thirteen years, ten years? I think it does.
Does it satisfy, if you were, if you were them, would it satisfy you?
Well, it, it shows me why we had to assess those amounts. And to me, that's the question they're asking, is why were those amounts assessed? And to me, it's because we needed the money, you know, we didn't have the money to pay all the warrants.
There is housing, you know, so.
Yeah, so, um, to me, yes, that answers that question. Um, why wasn't that assessed? That's not for me to answer, cause that's not my job. So, um, if the, if those are the questions they have, then that'll have to come from the board.
Is that their question on the board?
No.
Who on the board was?
The questions, on the, their petition is District Four FEMA Main Open Ditch Repairs. All repair work receiving FEMA dollars. Projections of cost, landowners have been told they are responsible for fifteen percent. Then it just states they've been billed for the three hundred thousand, the seven hundred thousand. It says twenty twenty-five, three hundred and ninety-two, but they weren't assessed anything in twenty twenty-five. Their request in accounting of where all FEMA dollars have been used as it pertains to Cassuth County Drainage Projects. And this kind of tells that, and I do have copies of the transfers if they have questions about money.
No, it says all drainage projects, not just, not just theirs. Is that right?
It says, the landowners request in the county of where all FEMA dollars have been used as it pertains to Cassuth County Drainage Projects.
And do we do that?
Well, they're gonna have to be more specific. We can't, we're not gonna go through every single FEMA project to the end of time to get that. They're gonna have to be more specific in what they're asking.
Some of that you gotta read into.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're doing work specific to Drain Four, fifteen one eleven, to show where those FEMA dollars went, so.
And the landowners also request the name of the individual that prepared the handout information used in Drainage District Four Information Meeting held on August sixth, twenty twenty-four. And that's what, that's what they're requesting, so.
Do we have the answer for the last one?
No.
Believe that question was asked of Todd, and he said that that's not a matter of public record?
He did say that.
The person.
The person, name of the person, yes.
Name of the person is not.
Correct.
So, bottom line, I didn't mean to repeat myself, I apologize, but bottom line, if, if this was presented to you, you'd be satisfied that everything's done?
I would be satisfied to answer the petition. I still would have questions of why the assessments weren't made, but that's probably. I mean, I guess, to me, because I've seen all the reports and seen all the information, I know where the money has gone. There is another question outside of what the petition says, and I've been working on that question. Um, is whether all of those invoices should have been paid out of Drain Four. Um, or are there other bills that maybe were paid out of Drain Four that shouldn't have been?
Were there?
I don't know, I'm going through, and so far I've got seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty twenty-one done. And there's a lot, cause I had to go through every single invoice, and I've made notes on my things. On seventeen, eighteen, I have three that I need to look further into. The amounts are less than two thousand dollars on that one, but still I need to look into those. Eighteen, nineteen, I have one I need to look into, five hundred and eighty-two dollars. Nineteen, twenty, I have one, sixteen hundred dollars, and twenty twenty-one, I have two that I need to look into. So.
So, the issue was, nothing was assessed when, we could maybe argue that it should have been assessed. The issue there becomes somebody that wanted to pay for it couldn't have. So, and then he racked up interest.
Correct.
And that interest comes from your office and gets split up, and then.
From the treasurer's office.
Yeah, that's where I get a little confused, and that, and that's on me, not on anybody else.
Yeah, so that's.
Once, once the assessments get to the treasurer's office, they say, once the assess, but, but you've got some interest that is assessed before it gets to the treasurer's office. Because it, once, once, once the, once the assess.
Oh, oh, you mean, yeah, so you mean before anything is assessed, the interest while the project is going on?
Yes.
Yeah, so that, that is assessed at the same time as the other, but the interest is accruing before that assessment. Is that what you mean?
Well, what I mean is, where I get hung up, and, and, and it's me, where I get hung up is, once these things get to the treasurer's office. All the interest is just between whoever holds the warrant and, and each, each parcel. Or, you, you don't get involved in that interest and we don't get involved in that interest.
No, but where I think when the assessments can be done, when there's projects, I might not be saying this a hundred percent correctly. But there is a spot when you're doing that, that you can put in, like, a date. And so it will calculate that interest, and that is done in the auditor's office. It might possibly not have.
When, when the assessments.
On a report that takes what you currently have for your outstanding balance, and yet you can set a date and say this is our target. And that's what we talked about with the assessments of, we use December first, how I'll do use all other fifteenth. So I mean, it's just a pick your target kind of thing, whatever, I mean.
So this, this column where it says interest paid, what is, tell me what that is?
That's all interest paid on the warrant. So what happens is when we come.
Why, why is that making it into your office? Interest paid on a warrant? I don't understand why.
It's not coming into my office.
But why is it even a matter of concern for you? Cause it's between whoever holds that warrant and whoever.
Because you need to know how much is paid on interest in order to know how much was.
Because it's, it's.
Completed, because otherwise next year, when it comes time to assessment, if you haven't calculated what's been paid on interest or what's due on interest, you're gonna be short.
It, it's the cost of doing business from the minute the bill is paid and approved by the board to the day that the funds actually come in. So, whatever that time period is, whether it's a month or eleven months or multiple years. From the day the board approves the invoice to the day the cash actually comes in is your working interest or cost of doing business. So, it's, it's a cost to the district, much the same way a piece of pipe or a load of rock or.
I, I understand that, but, and, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm sure this is me, I, I'm not, don't talk, I am, I'm positive. When we get, when this gets settled down, a, a, a light bulb will go on and everything for me. But, so, so you calculate interest from once, once you pay a bill or whatever, and, and that's gotta be paid up to the date of assessment.
So the, the interest is calculated, um, when, when it's redeemed, so.
But that shouldn't be your department at all.
It's not.
And it shouldn't even be on your spreadsheet. That's, that, that is not, again, and I, I'm sure I'm.
It has to be on this, this spreadsheet to show them what happened. How much has been paid. If it's not on this worksheet to show them, they're gonna be, well, where did all this money go?
Yeah, it, it has to be.
It has to be on there to explain where that money went.
It's a cost to the district, just the same.
I know, I disagree with that. I, and again, I, I'm probably wrong. I understand the interest, it's a cost to the district. But once it's assessed, once, once it's assessed and goes out to each parcel.
I think you're, I think you're getting hung up on, on one difference there. So there's a difference in the interest that's accumulated on each warrant, which is the bills we pay. Versus the interest that's accumulated on waivers that landowners sign up for. So, if the six of us sitting around the table here, half of them pay their bill immediately, you don't have an interest cost to that. You just paid what your assessment is. If the other half.
Which, which may include some interest of the project.
It should. It has to include interest of the project unless there was cash in the account to pay it ahead of time. So, if, if there was, yeah, if there was ten thousand dollars in an account and we approve a bill today to, for five thousand. You still have five thousand left over and you pay your bill right away and it's not actually leaving in the form of a warrant. That's just leaving in the form of a check.
Right.
If we don't have cash in the account, it's written as a warrant because the account has not sufficient funds. So the second it's issued as a warrant, it's accumulating interest. So you have to calculate that interest prior to assessment to get your correct total cost. Is that?
Correct.
So, once.
So the warrants are issued right, right away.
Yes.
To pay their bills, when they said.
Waivers.
And so interest between that point and when the assessment is made gets divided amongst everybody.
Yes. Waivers are different.
Just because there was no opportunity, bear with me, there was no opportunity for anybody to come in and pay. So that's all, so, so where is this interest paid? What's that represent? Interest paid by who?
Well.
No.
Interest paid by the landowners.
But he hasn't been assessed yet, he couldn't have paid any interest.
But he's gonna have to pay it, because that gets added to the assessment.
Okay, 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 the interest gets added to the assessment. Warrants issued plus interest that was paid out is gonna be a total, is gonna, is gonna raise the amount that needs to be assessed.
So that column would actually represent two forms of interest that would be paid. It, it represents the total interest that each warrant has accumulated by the time they're called in. But that number can come from two places. It could come from prior to assessment. Or it could come from interest that's accumulated from waivers that were signed up. Both. Both total dollars will be saved.
Now, I, I, I'm, I'm with you until you get, now you're, now you're confusing the issue for me. I'm with you to that point, because I'm with you that there's interest before there's assessment, and that has to be split up amongst everybody.
Yes, correct.
But, but once it's assessed, and if Farmer Brown paid, it, that, that, that don't, once it's assessed, that interest is paid.
Well, not if you have waiver on it, so those farmers that have waivers.
Still, that, that shouldn't, that shouldn't be your department, though. Waivers are took strictly the treasurer's office.
Well, we do the waivers, and then they, they collect on them, but they do come in our office and sign the waivers.
She still has to have accountability of the money coming in and out.
Yeah.
Right.
I, 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 I don't know if I buy that, but go ahead.
But, so, the waivers, like I asked Nick the same question, I said, so anything on waiver, the interest is covered, it's covering itself, because every year when they come in, they're bringing that interest up to date.
Right. Right.
Cause it calculates the interest on the waiver payment.
Yes. The difference, I think, falls in, okay, so when assessments go out, these people have until August thirtieth to sign up for a waiver. Okay, so we never know when assessments go out, who's going to sign up for the waiver.
Right.
So, I think that's where there's a difference. Am I wrong?
The, I think that's correct, and I would add on that it gets more complex when you have assessment after assessment, and I'm not saying that you could use any of them on this sheet for whatever reason, but you could use the prior project, you could use a more recent project, you could even use in twenty twelve where there was a fifteen thousand dollar, whatever. Um, when you have assessments on top of assessments, if someone from a year ago, or five years ago, or ten years ago, signed up for a waiver, their principal and interest payments are gonna be figured over the life of that time period, so.
But, I'm gonna interrupt you, I, I apologize greatly, I.
Go ahead.
But, but, which, I, and I, I, I saw the difference of it could be, that it could be between assessment and, or between, yes, assessment and them making a decision, I, I appreciate that, uh, I'm not sure how it ever gets paid, but I appreciate that there's a timeline there. But, but once it gets to Nick's office, he's paying the warrants, he's redeeming the warrants with interest, he's collecting the waivers with interest, I don't understand where you get involved in the middle of that.
In the middle of that, I don't get involved. My part is before that happens.
Right, and she is showing it here to represent the total cost, but where I was going with multiple assessments stacking on themselves, say you're at year three of so-and-so's payment plan, and then there's another assessment. If at the time, when they're called in, you're gonna see warrants redeemed and interest is paid, but that's gonna come from two sources of funds, you're gonna have the new assessment, and you're gonna have the old waivers and interest. So, those combine into the same category as total interest paid, that's also where it gets confusing. Not, I don't know if I'm explaining it the clearest way, or if anybody else has a different way, but.
How this, for this project is, is a represent- representation of what happened between two offices. This is what happened in that fund.
Yes.
Not necessarily what happened in my office, or what happened in Nick's office, but what happened with that fund.
Yeah.
So, it covers everything. So, that's what this represents is not just what I did, or what Nick did, it's a combination of what happened in that fund since twenty twenty, or twenty twelve.
The ca- excuse my cap and not be a statement, but if somebody stands up and says, okay, what is this, as long as you're, as long as you can justify it in your mind, and, and you're comfortable. And, I, bring it on, I guess, so, I, 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 none of us can rationalize why something wasn't assessed eight years ago.
Right, exactly, yeah, right.
I think, and to track it, it, that's the important part, when you track it, most of those years, there was never enough assessed.
Yeah.
That's the way it looks.
Yeah, so, when you track it that way.
Why, I don't know.
I don't know either, um, so when you track it that way, you realize, okay, yeah. You should have assessed this, and reassessed this, and in a couple of those years, there was like a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so, that gave me a couple of a lot of money.
So, so if, if, and maybe I don't know enough to shut up now, but if they're not satisfied next week, what, what is their recourse, and what is our defense?
Well, the purpose of the petition was to get the information, and I believe we're providing that information to them. So, they don't have to agree with the information, that's not the part of petition, the petition is to give them that information, so then if they don't agree with that information, then I suppose their recourse would be filing a suit.
Again, the cap, yeah, I, I, I apologize before I even say this out loud, but it's getting way past, uh, annoying is the wrong word, we're spending a lot of time and, and effort, it, it's time to put this to bed.
I agree.
I'd like to, can I ask this question? I don't even know if this is possible, could they, if, if not happy with what we've presented, could they ask for somebody independent to come in here and just audit that drain?
I'd fully support that.
Yeah.
If that is possible.
Yeah, I don't.
And who would pay that?
The drain would.
The drain would.
The drain would.
Which would be in other statements.
Yeah.
But, if that, if, if what we've compiled isn't satisfactory, could that be done? I didn't even know if that could be done, so.
Yes.
The only caveat, yeah, that I would say on that.
I'm pretty sure, but they're not gonna get any records than what we've given them, but, yes, it could be.
Exactly, but I'm just saying, then.
It's a different voice.
Yeah.
Uh, somebody independent from here comes in and says, hey, nope, this is what happened, and it's ours, same as our, us, that, that would probably be the ultimate way to satisfy that.
The, the only caveat I would put on that is I would say that the entire time period that's on Tammy's spreadsheet should be in their scope because, um, starting at twenty nineteen is not a complete and accurate picture of this drain.
That's clear.
You have to go back to a point where things.
No, that's what they're, or someone holding.
Maybe you're, maybe you're off route.
Yeah.
Yep, I mean, I don't, I don't see there, I don't see any substantial issue with basically twelve through sixteen, I mean, there's, you look, well, sixteen is when you start having some of those probably engineering, and maybe even some construction bills for phase one or phase two, um, maybe engineering on both, whatever, and that's where I say, to some degree, that assessment of zero in the sixteen seventeen column is much the same as the assessments for zero in twenty one, twenty two, and twenty two, twenty three, because that project was active at the time. So, prior to that, though, you, say you look at fifteen up, you're looking at ten to fifteen thousand, and correlating assessments very similar to that, so.
So, it might be a waste of time to.
It's, it's fair, I think it's, I think it's reasonably acceptable for everybody to say that prior to fifteen, it's probably on track.
Hard to argue with that, though, might, you know, but for God's sake, if that's gonna be something that they're gonna go back, if, if they're not satisfied, and they want more, they can do all they want, but remember, you're paying for it.
Yep.
Right.
I'd have no problem going back even farther than that, but I think you would at least need to go back to a point where everybody agrees with.
Absolutely, absolutely, you need to go back to a point where everybody agrees, that's, that's the end.
Well, go back to the beginning of time if we want, I don't really care, but.
And I'd actually go back a little bit more than what you had said with the, did you say sixteen or seventeen?
I said fifteen, um, cause there was, in.
Because. The assessment, there was, the actual fund balance in the drain as of six thirty sixteen was maybe of a hundred, almost a hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah.
We assessed two, twenty two thousand, two hundred and fifty.
So, on. Yeah, on Tammy's sheet, it's line nine that shows twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, that had fourteen thousand warrants issued, and thirteen and a half was assessed, so, and, I mean.
But there are warrants outstanding, who, in addition to the ones?
Yeah.
Um, no, I would think that would be including the ones that were issued.
Yes.
How can warrants outstanding be less than the ones issued?
Somebody might have paid at that time, when they were.
Yeah, paid through the statements, or.
Okay, so you think, you think column C is inclusive of column B?
I do, yeah.
What was issued subtracting what was available to be paid off? So, there is another.
No.
Uh, yeah, let's, let her answer the question, it's her sheet.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, the warrants issued is the total amount of warrants that were issued, the warrants outstanding are as of that date, June thirtieth,
the end of fiscal year.
what's still left to be paid.
But, so C is inclusive of B or not?
So. It would have to be, because those were issued prior in the year, so, and that would be, that would be a one day in time snapshot at the end of the fiscal year, right?
Yeah. Yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yes.
So, your one day in time would encompass what was issued before that, because they would be on the books if they hadn't been paid already.
Okay. Okay.
So, yes, if, say, if something from ten or eleven months prior, then that warrants outstanding date, if something got paid because of a previous assessment, or a waiver that was paid or whatever, that might not show on the outstanding report at the time because it's paid and cleared.
Long as, I, I mean, I don't, I'm not trying to dump this on you, but as long as you can explain it, and it, it's time to, I mean, I know everybody's saying the same thing, this is nothing novel, but it's time to.
Yes. Yep.
I, I think the only thing that I would firmly say again is, I think more comparisons of the different periods of time that I laid out before, they could be incorporated in addition to what Tammy had laid out, um, after twenty two. But I think the other comparisons should be on the sheet as well. It's, it's all the same numbers, it's the same spreadsheet, it's just a different period of time.
Whatever she's comfortable with.
Yeah, yeah, cause I think that's, I don't know, just first thought, I feel like it confuses it. It, whereas it's just one thing to look at, here's where we started, here's the end, this is everything that happened in that time period. I mean, it lays it all out.
I, I agree, I agree with your point that there's no point in starting in nineteen when there's a whole bunch of business in the previous three years, and not enough assessment, that's hard, that's hard to argue with.
And, and it, and in all reality, having a total of the drain when we're in the beginning or partway into another project that hadn't been assessed anything yet, I don't think that's a fair representation of where, where those costs came from. Because you could look at, we, I mean, we could go back and find the first invoice from Oldman Mink after they were appointed, and we could have the date of the motion when they were appointed by the board, we could have the date of the first, first bill that was submitted for that, but once you cross that timeline of rolling into the second project, I think it's hard to have a total that crosses that, that timeline.
I'm not following you, I'm not, I, I, it sounds like I'm not trying to hear you, I'm just not, maybe I'm not trying hard enough, but again, if, if you're gonna, if you're gonna rationalize it, then you're the one that needs to be comfortable.
Well, if, if they ask, why wasn't something assessed?
Then you can point that out.
I, I can, and I will, but I think if we're gonna have it printed on a piece of paper, I think it might as well be there, um.
Well, I'm gonna be frank, Kyle, that's about the time you started, and I don't want this to be a shooting match between you and Don McGregor
I know.
over what happened and when, I want this to be a clear cut, this is what happened, this is answering the questions that you're asking, not what happened over time periods when one person was a supervisor and the other wasn't, I don't want it to be that. I want this to show what they're asking, period.
I, I agree with that, but the time period that was requested in the petition has a time period of twenty nineteen, so.
We're ignoring, we're ignoring that, we're going back further.
Yeah, we're going back further, it's not like, we're not doing what they asked, that's incorporated in this, and I'm just gonna say, you know, Tammy has taken the time to put this together, and we did not necessarily give her much guidance for that. We just said, yeah, we need to do a spreadsheet, and we need to get this figured out, and she did it. I think it's a little late in the game to try and change anything, I think what she has put together, um, and especially since I kinda sort of did the same thing, and we match, I, I think that's a really good thing, I think this is a good spreadsheet, and she's familiar with it, she understands it, she put it together, that's, I'd like to see it just stay like this.
So, what, and anybody can feel free to answer this, but what is the purpose of a total in between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three when you have the totals at the bottom? If we're gonna show the whole thing, just show the whole thing.
Uh, the reason I did that, I think I've said this a couple times already, is because they're asking about the three hundred thousand and the seven hundred thousand specifically. And so, I wanted to show them, and I believe I talked to you about this before, and you asked me to move it up a year, so I did, put it after twenty twenty two, why we had to do that, where we were, and because in twenty two, twenty three, we had a big project where warrants were issued, I wanted to do it before that, so that specifically shows how much of a difference we had at that point.
I believe I asked her to be moved up to nineteen, but I'm not trying to argue about that, I guess when, when you try to explain why it happened, um, I, I think that's gonna have as much confusion as answers in that location, so.
Does the rest of the board agree with that?
I'm following it. The questions are asked.
My position is if you can answer their questions, and, and you think it's justified, go with it.
I mean, I don't have to have it there, I just thought that that was a clarity point for me, to see, oh, look at how much we're behind already.
Right.
So, but that's just me, if you, as a board, want me to change it, I will change it.
I'm.
Leave it.
Okay.
I'd say, I'd say leave it.
Cause that's what they're after, because I, I know there's other, there's always other factors, other reasonings behind every year, um, and, and if they got other questions, then we can answer them.
If they have. Specific question, a specific person can answer, that's fine, but if it's just general questions about how the numbers add up, that's your department.
Right.
Yep.
Just a random question, why is there such a specific amount of assessments up to anything, when all the others are rounded figures? Is there any reason to that, or?
I have no idea, I wasn't here.
Okay.
You mean the eight hundred and twenty three, or which, which number?
You don't ask the one. Yeah, eight hundred and twenty three thousand, fourteen dollars and ninety eight cents.
That's a pretty specific.
That's a pretty specific amount to assess.
Yeah, it is very specific, and it doesn't mention the project.
No, it doesn't.
That's why I.
We don't, and if you go back to and pull up, you know, where all the drainage assessments are, the explanation doesn't make that much sense, so.
No.
Yeah.
No clue.
Okay.
Cause I went to each and every one to try and find out, okay, why was, why did this number picked, and you cannot really figure it out.
No.
So.
So, we did assessments a month ago, or whatever, we rounded up, we had a rationale.
Yeah.
Is, is that somehow written down and explained, like, what we, how we came up with that number? Or are we gonna, twenty years from now, is somebody gonna say, how did you do that, or why, why did you do that?
That's probably something that could or should be incorporated into our drainage policy discussion.
We, we have the record, we have the recording, you said that before, but.
I mean, we do, but it's, it's probably something that we could lay out in black and white and say, this is the policy of the board, and this is our intention.
I, I don't wanna lay this on, on anybody, and I'm not, okay, please don't anybody be personally offended, but there's, there's not, Tammy's been here for four years, there's not much point in a specific question going to Tammy that happened before that, other than what she's researched. Carter and Josh have been here for two years, or leaning on three, there's not much point, there's not much point. I mean, are you gonna accept, and I'm not saying you should, are you gonna accept questions of what happened in, uh, through, through the time when you were an auditor, are you gonna try to address those, or?
Well, it depends what the question is, is whether I can answer it or not, like I said, I've gone back to all the assessments. Every single year of everything I have on the spreadsheet, I did to look and try and find the explanation and understand the wording and why this was. Every single year of everything I have on the spreadsheet I did to look and try and find the explanation and understand the wording and why this was done. I don't have an answer.
Okay.
And I, I mean, I don't, and I'm okay saying that because I don't because.
She she wasn't the drainage clerk and that.
Right, I understand.
And the board approved the assessments that came in here, I I didn't, I don't have an answer.
No.
I mean, I have looked to try and track it.
Some somebody asked for all of us to understand what was going on.
It's hard.
I made no attempt, I I I made, I mean, I'm attempting to understand what the cow, but I made no attempt to go do any research and and reinvent the wheel. And and uh I'm not gonna, I guess I'm not gonna apologize for that either, so.
You know. Well, no, and it's really hard to go back and try and figure out exactly what happened. Um, you know, to put it together, we can at least track it, but I I don't, I don't know. I I'll answer whatever I can, absolutely, I have no issue with that. Um, but I'm not gonna sit here and have it be like the August sixth meeting in two thousand twenty-four, but unfortunately, I couldn't be here to, you know, defend myself. Um, I'm not gonna have it be, I don't think it should be a personal attack on anything, and that's the way the August sixth meeting went.
I did not want it to be like that at all.
I don't, and it shouldn't be, because um even the dollar figures thrown away at that, thrown around at that meeting were inaccurate. Four and a half million dollars that, um, you know, that that was set, or I I cost the taxpayers four point five million dollars. Because of wrongdoing in the in the these drainage events, that was in inaccurate statement. Um, very inaccurate statement, that wasn't corrected, um, which is neither here nor there, but it shouldn't be that way. Because, you know, I I do realize that I was auditor at the time where some of these errors took place. Uh, but I have no answer for it, I I can't answer why it was done.
Yeah, we're unsure it was an error because it just wasn't done.
It. Exactly, it just wasn't done and and I don't have an answer for it, and that's why I tried to go back so far. So I wasn't just, you know, I didn't want it to be, oh, well, look, she only picked, you know, two thousand twenty, but it's that's a year to left, no, I went back all the way to eleven, twelve. You know, I I went back as far as they could to try and get to a point where they were somewhat whole and then try to make sense of it from there. So, you know, I'd be happy to answer questions, I just don't know if I have answers.
Right, and you won't have some answers because that wasn't your job, yes, you're responsible for it, but just like me, it wasn't my job. Um, that's why we hired somebody to do that job, are we responsible? Yes, but we're not gonna have all the answers.
Exactly, it's it's like trying to answer the, you know, you might, you don't do payroll.
Right.
But yet, and you're going to rely on your payroll person to answer that question, kinda like Nick, he might rely on Marlese to answer a question over on that site. You have those people in place and you assume it's being done accurately, um.
And and you're right, I mean, at the end of the day, it's the board that prints the assessments, no matter what information is provided or whatnot. It's it's the board acting as trustees that makes those final decisions.
And that's why going forward, this is, you know, I think that we put a pretty good practice in place going through them like we did, we really did go through them.
That spreadsheet was much better than previous years.
I'm very, I'm I'm very proud of that and we'll only get better, honestly, we'll only get better. I was kinda gonna circle back and you said something about rounding up, but Tammy, you had sent us an email about that. About the rounding up, it was different, like it couldn't be that exact amount, so.
Oh, yeah, so.
We can't probably have an exact policy for that dollar.
Yeah, so, what what I didn't know when we did that, because I've never done that before.
Yeah.
Was when you go in and put it in solutions, you don't put in an amount, you put in a percentage, and then it calculates what that amount is. So sometimes you put in that percentage and based on rounding, that number could be off quite a bit.
Yeah.
So that's what that was, um, so I tried to put in percentages to get it as close as I could without wasting too much time. So that's what that is, so next year, um, when we do it, it'll be like Palo Alto County, they do theirs by percentages. Um, so that it doesn't have to be on the dot, um, but.
Right.
Well, and even, I mean, that could be some other justification for the eight twenty-three zero one four, I mean, eight twenty-three could have been the intended target. Um, could have been fourteen dollars and ninety-eight cents higher. Um, but I guess however we improve it for next year, I'm fine with having that conversation, so we make it as easy as possible or whatever. But even if our policy, as we said in the assessment, to the next five hundred dollars higher than what's needed. And then the auditor's office, when you get to actually plugging it in, as long as you're at or above that, as close as you can get, within a hundred dollars or five hundred dollars or whatever. Maybe that can be a second piece of that equation, I mean, I don't, I don't know that we need to get down to nitty gritty details immediately today. But that's definitely something we can learn and improve for next year, but I think as long as our general principle is on the same direction. I'm not too worried about a dollar and cent difference in between, I mean, I don't think anybody really is.
No, just so we have a, you know, we're aware and we get as close as we can get. Cuz you you don't, you can't get perfect as far as rounding up, because the computer's gonna round different regardless.
Yeah.
It just does, especially in solutions.
Well, I think we've covered this topic.
I think so.
Well, Kyle, you said that you had some things you wanted to say, I'd rather hear them now than Tuesday.
Um, I do, but I think we had a good conversation now, I'm happy to go over with you after the meeting if you want. Um, but I think I will save some of my more overview final thoughts for that point. I mean, I echo what Howard said and everybody, I think it's long past time to put this to bed.
All right. Well, we will move on to auditor discussion then.
Okay. So before we do that, sorry, what do I need to make sure that I have copies of? Both spreadsheets?
Mm-hmm.
Um.
I don't know if we need a copy of the petition itself.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
I think that that might be a good, a good thing to have.
I don't know if you gotta make five hundred, you know, for everybody to might show up, but maybe, yeah, I don't know.
How many people you think are gonna come, twenty-five?
I don't know.
Five fifty.
I don't know. We sent out three hundred.
Yeah, but not everybody.
We won't have three hundred.
No, I know we won't, but I'm just saying.
I mean, we can always make copies if we have more people and we need to quick run some.
Yeah. I would do fifty, fifty copies of each, and then if we need to make copies, we can get a copy machine right on the other side of the door.
How many people can fit in here?
A lot more than you think.
We've had, we've had people standing in the hallway before.
Yeah, we've had people holding down the hall.
I I think you can't fit forty to fifty in here, it's tight, but I think you can get close to that.
Yeah. There you go.
Well, I'm thinking too, for people that come and can't make it to the meeting, but wanna come and grab copies later on too, so.
Yeah.
Um, do we need copy of the assessment spreadsheets, what did that say? No, that's not asking for copy, that's just a statement.
Forty chairs.
Did you count them? There's forty.
Around.
I'm sure we can get another ten in here.
We try at least.
Because if you remove the last chairs, there could be a couple more on each side of here.
Probably another row, had a whole other row.
Yeah.
It could be.
Yeah, we'll, we'll set it up so that we can get some more in here.
So, yeah, I think forty to fifty would be.
Okay, copies of any, copies of anything else?
Good to be prepared for it.
I don't think so, as long as we have that covered.
Okay.
And you have those, you're printing those things and you have the, like you said, you've worked on the fiscal years, that have been available, if something is asked, you can say.
Yeah, yeah, well, I can email it cuz I have it.
Mm-hmm.
So that I can email him too, because, you know, making fifty copies of all these is gonna be not worth it, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no, no.
Those those could be in our, those could be in our board packet, um, in a folder, I mean, then you or us or anyone could pull it up on the computer at the time if any questions come.
I say it's just available.
Yeah.
I'm not scanning these.
No, what you would have there would have come from PDF report on solutions.
This.
I don't.
This, first page, yes, but the rest of these are all copies of the invoices and claims and all that to show.
I'd say you have them, if there is a question on a certain fiscal year, you have them, we'll answer.
Yes.
Yeah, you have them, if they wanna come with an independent review, you.
Yes, I have them.
Yeah, and I don't think, I mean, I don't want all that.
Yep.
I'm thankful you're going through that, but I think you only have copies of them.
Okay. All right, so next week, of course, we have our public hearing and then our regular weekly stuff. Um, I do have a couple things. Here. Um, so I got an email from Ann Henders from Hancock County. She had sent me a memorandum of understanding and I think I had sent you guys an email about that.
Yeah, I did.
Um, and I can't remember if this was ever presented to you guys or not, I know we talked about a memo of understanding with Humboldt County, but I wasn't sure if we talked about one with Hancock County.
I don't, I don't think we did, I think it was just Humboldt we talked about.
Okay. Okay, um, and this is something they have in place right now with Wright County, um, so.
It was the same fifteen thousand dollars from Humboldt County wanted to use, so you you gotta wonder where it all, who was first, it doesn't matter, but you gotta wonder who was first.
Yeah. Yeah.
Wright County and.
Yeah.
And then they went to Humboldt County and.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter, did we?
Who did it before Wright County?
Yeah, yeah, possibly, it could have been whoever.
There's a little trail to follow.
Wes Wes Rick being the um president or whatever for IDDA, I would imagine it probably started in Humboldt.
Well, Humboldt did it with, and they're the ones that presented it first to Wright and Webster and Porcoana.
I mean, I haven't asked.
So I imagine Wright is building off of that and to Hancock, and now Hancock's coming here, that's, that's my guess.
Yeah.
Did we, did we, uh, we did eventually agree.
We never approved any.
We did.
We were gonna check with the other counties, that was the.
We were gonna look at some stuff and come back, I don't know all the details there, but.
Well, I know someone's gonna reach out to IDDA to see where that came from, where the memorandum came from, the origination of it, so.
So I know, um, at the last meeting, I wasn't able to make, um, because we were short-staffed. Heidi from Emmett County went and said that they did talk about these in length at the, at that meeting.
That's not a good meeting or what?
Um, it was a drainage meeting.
Okay, oh.
So, um, I think it is something we're gonna see.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
So.
We already got it from two of our neighbors, so.
Yeah, so I guess my question is, do you want this on the agenda to discuss, do you want me to hold on to it, what do you want me to do with it?
Well, it's something we're gonna have to do, I guess.
Well, I I mean, I appreciate that we're gonna have to do something, but there's not much point putting on the agenda unless we, we're we're gonna do something.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I mean, if we still have questions for I IDDA, we have not much point putting it on the agenda yet. If we don't have questions and and we're all comfortable with this fifteen thousand, that's what the world is going to, we don't have to be the first ones to jump on board or the last, we just.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe, maybe just have a note to talk about during auditor discussion next week and then we can see if anyone has anything.
Are you gonna do your research before then?
Or a couple weeks, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't hear you, I, I mean, I don't.
I mean, we have ISAC this week, I don't know if anyone else is going to that or not, but.
I'm planning on going.
There will probably be conversations there about it.
Be a good place to find answers.
Okay. Okay. Um.
I, it it, excuse me for being late to the party, but she said she had an agreement with Wright, did she say anything about Sarah Gordo in Winnebago?
No, this contract that she sent me was just between Hancock and Wright.
I I read an email.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
Yeah, okay.
That's all I know of anyway.
Sorry, sorry about that.
No, no worries.
Well, we have a joint drain with Wright County too.
Yeah, I think.
In the corner.
I think, um, that would cover all the, you know, if we, we wouldn't have to have a separate one with Wright, if we did that one, it would be all thirty, no, okay.
Cause that's, you'd have to have, it's Cassou, I think it's like Cassou, Hancock and and Wright are in that drain?
It would be with each county.
Or maybe not.
I don't know.
We have a tri-drain, we have some tri-drains.
That's Pal, that's Palo Alto.
Well, we got Tri eighty-four up in.
Certainly, we have Palo Alto.
Yeah, we have tri-drains with Palo Alto and um and.
Mm-hmm.
But no, it would, it would have to be with each, with each county, because each county would be a set of trustees for that district, so they would each have legal authority.
But I'm just saying, I, we haven't heard anything from Wright County.
No.
So it's, yeah, that one, yeah, so they want to.
Again, we don't have to be last, but we don't have to be first.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that it's top priority for me personally or accounting, I guess, but I think, yeah, I had to go. It'll probably be sometime in the future, but I don't know that it's burning fire today.
Okay. Um, and I think that's all I have, I am planning on going to ISAC, but hopefully I'll get there.
What about the email that you had sent us, action required, Purdue, Dirk, someone that was on?
Opioid.
No, opioid.
Monday, do we need to talk about anything with that?
Oh, yeah.
This should probably be reviewed by the board.
Yeah, I think I printed that out so I wouldn't forget it. Sorry, thank you, I'm late to meet. I guess I didn't print that out.
And I don't, I mean.
It looks like it's a new, a new, um.
I don't know.
Whatever you call it.
Opioid settlement.
Yeah, a new company.
I don't know if that's something we would need to talk with Todd in closed session about, since it would involve litigation and settlement or if that's something. I I don't, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out for the wing in case.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I would ask that question, Todd, see if there's anything in there that we can be in closed session for, otherwise. If he doesn't think it is necessary, then.
I would imagine at some point he would be looking for approval from the board. Um, but I don't know if he wants to lead that with closed session conversation or open session conversation or whatnot, so.
Cuz it's, it says it's time sensitive.
Yeah, if we're gonna miss out on some money, I, I, my question was sitting here saying, I remember reading that too, and if 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 we need to do something today.
Yeah. Is he here today, could we just quick buzz him?
Yeah, good try.
Good try.
See, and then I didn't, I'm gonna be honest with you, I didn't open up the document to review it because I didn't know if I should.
I know, I sent it to Derek just to make sure, because some of those things, so.
Yeah. So I didn't, but I read the other stuff and I'm like, yeah, I think so.
But he said it was okay, so.
Hey, Todd, it's Josh up here in the boardroom, uh, so we're kinda talking about that opioid stuff, um, that was emailed out, uh, would you have a minute to come up? Okay, all right, thanks.
One is coming up, we need to run that, see the restroom real fast.
Yeah, especially if it is time sensitive, but that's, that's probably gonna be another one of those cases where you can only spend it on certain things, right?
Yeah.
And and we, and.
It'll, it'll go with the other opioid money that we get.
Have we ever used any of it?
Not yet, but we have a, um. Panel, I can't think of the right word, committee, that, um, goes through those applications and then reviews them and then decides if they fit the criteria or not. Um, and then at, the committee decided that they're only going to go through that process once a year in November, I think is what was decided, um, so they will.
A committee of citizens?
No, uh, employees, I think, um, Roger, me.
So there's a request from Mason City that I blocked on because of geography, did that go through to the committee or just to us?
Yeah.
Um, remind me what that one was from.
They had some center and they, they were assessing based on population and and my concern was that, you know, or you get, they had to show up every day to get this withdrawal, I could get a withdrawal.
Yeah, yeah, I think that went to the committee, um, and I can't remember what what happened with that or if we're gonna look at that in November, but.
Okay.
Here it goes, done.
That sounds like a good idea, Josh.
Yeah, so I think that one, so we decided it, when somebody wants to.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, talk about opioid. Yeah, so I think that one, so we decided it, when somebody wants to, good morning, talk about opioid funds, they have to fill out this application, so. I think that's when we sent it.
Wasn't, didn't Josh call me?
Yeah, he just had to go get some.
The, the first question I had, or I guess we all maybe have, is, is this something we need to talk about in closed session with that email you sent at all? Or, okay, I just find it.
No, it's, uh, it's the same as the, uh, the other two settlements we had, uh, the, matter of fact, I got the email, I'm gonna, I'll send it out to all of you again. For another one that has to have a response by October fourth. So it's just a discussion you wanna have on the.
How time-sensitive is this, this one?
This one is September.
We were all, not all.
That we all need to go in and sign, or?
You just have to appoint somebody to do it.
Oh, okay.
I didn't have the authority to do it, um, I can't remember, it's been a couple years ago, three years ago since the last one. And I remember if I was given the authority to sign, I think it was. So I mean, if you guys wanna do that as well, before you put it on the agenda, I'm gonna be gone next Tuesday, if you wanna do the following Tuesday. I will send out that other email, maybe we can kill two birds with one stone, the, the second one is more similar to the other two, cause there's, there's a whole host of, um, this is just two parties, there's a whole host of parties of the other one, which sounds like it's going to be sizable, so I don't have any details of that yet, but. I don't remember, I didn't pull that up before I rushed up here, but you, it says in there when the deadline is.
And I keep missing that. Says, time-sensitive opioid settlement documents must be executed in order to participate. But I'm not seeing a date, do I have to go into it to review? Okay.
We're, we're trying that, click on.
Yeah, but I did check, I did check with their.
You're not gonna be wrong if you do, it's something that I assume that, you know, it's money that we're owed, based upon the settlement. And the only thing you'd be eliminating is the ability to sue privately as a county against them, and.
You sure you don't wanna do that?
No, those, uh, those types of class actions are, uh, pretty.
September thirtieth, September thirtieth.
September thirtieth.
It says right at the top deadline, September thirtieth.
So it does?
So we got plenty of time to do it in two weeks.
So if you wanna do it in two weeks, um, yeah, my recommendation, uh, for what it's worth, is just appoint me as the, the signature thor-, with the signature authority on it. Uh, and then, uh, on both of them, and then when that, cause I don't have an email yet for the second one. It was just an email saying that it's coming, so. That's it, you surprised me, Josh. I walked in here, you're the one to call, but you're the only one out here, what's going on here?
I thought I had a few more minutes.
Hey, when you call, I come, right? So, um, yeah, so if you put it on for two weeks, I'll be able to come up.
Okay, that's all I have now, thanks for reminding me, Amber.
Howard, you got anything?
I went to the department head meeting last Thursday morning, and predominantly that was discussion about all the woes and challenges of changing the payroll system. There was an email this week, I believe, from Renee or whatever, a couple of them talking about it, and, uh. I'm sometimes I'm confused, but I think I've, have, I've landed, or what I've heard is that you're in favor of the two-week thing, and, uh, there, there's gonna be little, little, uh, idiosyncrasies that pop up over the years, depending on when days of the week fall, and, and relationship with the calendar, and that changes all the time, but. In the end, I'm gonna come down to let's just do it, that's where I'm at.
So I have been in touch with Ann from Ayers and Cooney, and she did send me a copy of a resolution that one of the counties that just recently changed.
Is that the one you sent to her?
No, this, this is a different one, um, and so, um.
Will we just approve a resolution in the boardroom?
Yeah, um, and it, that's pretty standard, um, but then, um, I'm hoping to call her sometime this week to go over, um, other processes, I know somebody had said that they can help with documents to help explain it to employees, how it works, and maybe set up a time period, um, of how to make it an easier adjustment, um, without going such a long period of time without a paycheck, those kind of things, so.
And will you base it kinda off of the jailer's pay cycle, since they're seven on, seven off?
And EMS would be twenty-eight day cycle too.
Yeah, they said they, that'd be a good transition for them too.
So there's a, theoretically a fifty-fifty chance, you wanted to implement on a certain day, in a certain month, and there, there's theoretically a chance that that would be in the middle of the jailer's cycle, have you looked into that?
I have not looked into that yet, but, so July first is when we talked about implementing it, um, so. We would, that's something we would have to look into, and we'd have to send that to Ann, and get her perspective on that.
You know, get like, get their calendar, and see where it can transition.
Well, I'd say, I think you'll be right in fact here, if it, correctly, I'm, I'm, I'm not dictating it, but. There, there's been a lot of talk about the fiscal year, and lining with the fiscal year, and I s-, I'm, I'm gonna say that that's probably, the jailers are probably gonna try to do, but again, over time, things are gonna move, one day at a time. And so, it, it's, it's, I'm still, it might still be a fifty-fifty chance, but if you're gonna adjust, you might have to, you might have to adjust. I, I don't know, I, I, I don't, I just, I don't perceive this as that large, I, the, the. Best possible amount that there's several reasons and blah, 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 and we're giving them time to adjust, and, and, uh. I mean, the, when you start talking about next July first, that's a lot of time to, what, ten dollars a week away, and.
Yeah, I talked to Elizabeth yesterday, she was here doing some pre-audit stuff, and I talked to her a little bit about the payroll, um, system, and. You know, she told me basically the same thing she had told Amber about internal control, and that, um, you know, it's just something that needs to be done. Other counties have gone through the same thing, and yes, it's a headache to start, but eventually it will become. Hopefully a benefit for all employees, I think.
I think so.
So, um, but Elizabeth's on the same page too, like Renee said, you know, we need to do it. Um, and we need to do it the same for everybody, so.
And if you guys have been talking about it for thirty years, it's time to rip the, rip the bad date off and put it to bed too.
Since twenty thirteen, is that what we decided, twenty thirteen?
Anyway, that's all I, that's all I've done outside of order this week, I believe.
That's, that's all I had to, it's all I had to, so.
Yeah, I'll have, um, I plan to go down to ISAC, so, and, um, after EMS meeting tonight, so.
I've got, uh, E nine one one tonight at six, so. And I've got Board Health tomorrow morning, a question from a landowner this morning on my way up. He is, he wanted to tile privately to a county facility, but the neighbor is not wanting. He just wants to upsize the existing tile, and the neighbor is not wanting to allow that to happen. Um, and this landowner is more than open to the neighbor hooking into it, but the neighbor just doesn't want to. Um, so is there a, legally, does the neighbor have to allow him to upsize that and access the county facility? He's already has access to it, he just wants to, just wants a larger tile, and it runs through the neighbors.
And I'm assuming he's assessed for that facility?
For those acres?
For those acres?
He's in the drainage district, yeah.
Is it even borderline with anything else, or, don't know.
Totally inclusive.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Can you go a different route?
No. Is.
Why, what are you saying?
Is everything that he wants to drain already paying for the drainage district facility that he's using?
I, I would be ca-, very careful giving a shotgun answer to this question, you, you.
If, if you have, if you have this piece of paper.
You're saying what, what he's wanting to tile new, and to, to want to upsize that tile for?
The size is not the issue, the acres are.
Okay.
The land, the area that he wants to drain, or is currently draining. Are they paying for the benefit of that facility that he wants to go to?
Okay.
If the answer is yes, he has the full beneficial use of the facility, whatever size pipe he wants to put in the ground. If the answer is no, then the answer is no.
Right, right.
So, it's about the area that's assessed, and the benefit that they're currently getting.
But if he's got a six-inch tile coming in and hooking into this county tile now, theoretically, it isn't, it, it can't drain already. Can't drain any more than what?
I mean, let's say.
He's not, he's not adding anything, it's just, it's an existing tile, the, the acres are already drained.
So let's say he's got twenty acres.
Illegally or illegally.
Well, I, I saw him, yeah.
That's, that's a question to answer, but let's say he's got twenty acres, and he's currently draining through a six-inch pipe, and the county facility is a twelve inch at the end, and that's where he's tied into. He could tie in with a twelve, if he wants a bigger capacity, as long as it's only serving acres that are paying for that facility.
Well, I, yeah, I'd agree with that, I think he could tie in with a thirty-six if he wanted to, as long as.
But if he's all kosher with the, with everything, does the neighbor then have to allow him to be able to upsize that?
They do typically, you try to work with your neighbor and get along with it. There is a process for basically extending the district facility, or adding a sub-district to extend that, to get him direct access, if the neighbor doesn't cooperate, so as long as they're actually paying for the benefit of the facility, they have the full beneficial use of it.
Okay, well, that's, that's what I thought, but I, yeah. But yes, the acres in question is, I guess that'd have to be determined, but.
Make sure he understands he can't expand.
As long as there's not a debate on which acres go which direction, then probably okay, but. If it's, if it's a.
Make sure it's not going further than what.
Well, and, and that's, that's a, that's a valid point, I mean, it, 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 I, I'm gonna assume he can't, I mean, usually, if he, if he's, he, you know, it's not, he's not gonna be able to go deeper, he's not gonna be able to put the tile on deeper. He's just gonna be able to make it bigger, and if he can't go deeper, I assume that they went as far as they could, as far as draining, you know, the ground fell the other way. But again, I don't, I don't know, the answer, my answer would be be careful. I think we've gotten ourselves in trouble in the past, shooting from the hip, and.
Oh, for sure, well, that's why I'm bringing it up here, yeah.
The other, the other caveat is, um, there is somewhat of a difference between an old system that was installed a hundred years ago, that's already undersized, and nobody has recently paid for improvements, versus something that the neighbors just spent a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars an acre on a brand-new tile, and now you wanna tie in and. Adding capacity, so I mean, we have had situations where someone wanted to cross district lines, and it's the back little corner of their field for a couple acres, or whatever, and going into an old undersized system is not really gonna change the substance of that, but if you're bringing substantial amount of acres, and substantial amount of water to a new facility that someone else previously paid a lot of money for, that's obviously a different context, so. But I think, yeah, what Howard said is, right, most likely they're not gonna be able to bring much more than it would have been designed for, but with the new technology and the newer projects, you get typically better depth than the old systems and stuff like that, so. If you're in an area where there was an improvement done, I'd say anytime in the last, up to ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, maybe even. Anything with a semi-recent improvement project could have the potential to get more if they went deeper, or whatever.
Right, Josh, which is what, kinda what Josh is referencing, you know, you, you. You used to not be able to go through that hill, but now you can go through that hill, and maybe there's twenty acres on the other side, and. But I, I don't see where the, if, if the guy, he could, I don't see how we can stop it from putting on a bigger tile on the system. Cause you got, we've said a hundred times, and, you know, you're, you're open to it.
Yeah, there, there is sections of the code that specifically pertain to that, four sixty-eight, I don't know the number off the top of my head for that specific section, but there are sections that pertain to it, um, and we have had conversations with, I mean, there was one situation in particular, I can remember there was probably a hundred, maybe two hundred feet of distance between the road and the end of the drainage district facility, and the person right on the other side of the road needed access to it, and they thought there was a tile there, but they couldn't find it, and the neighbor tried to say, well, you can't drain this way, well, they were assessed to drain that way, because that's where their water's supposed to go, so eventually they just came to a neighborly agreement, and that's all it took, but there is a section of code that does pertain to that.
Good enough, well, that's all I have, so, if nothing else, the motion to adjourn. Motion by Wactor. Second by Stacker.
I don't wanna make it every week.
Any discussion? Uh, not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried, we are adjourned at twelve oh five.